Good evening and welcome to the November 27, 2023 City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew? Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
And Mayor Russ?
I am here. So we have, is Councilmember Mayhew, does he happen to be online? Let's see him. Motion to excuse. Is there a second?
Second.
Just move by, Councilmember Richardson? Actually, he is just arriving now, so please note.
I say we don't excuse him. I'm sick and tired of this behavior. He needs to learn a lesson.
Okay, so everyone is accounted for, welcome. And next item is, first item of the agenda is to approve the agenda. Councilmember Mayhew has motioned to approve the agenda and this is for the roundtable.
Second.
Second.
Heard it so moved, so by Councilwoman Watten and second by Councilwoman Johnson. Any discussion?
I say we.
Seeing none, all those in favor, see I?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, so the first item is AB 23-141 Utility Fiscal Health and Rate Study Adjustment Presentation and Discussion, which will be led by Dylan Gamble, our CIP Project Manager.
Good evening, Council, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give us a quick update and kind of primer on the topic of utility rates and specific to the city of Snoqualmie. And then I'm going to pass a presentation off to our consultant, FCS Group, and Sergey is online right now, so he'll be ready to go as soon as I run down some of the basics and some of the details, that way we're ready for his presentation. I think he'll go ahead and share it. I want to start by saying that the city has three utilities. We have a stormwater utility, water utility, and a sewer wastewater utility. The way that we operate these is separate from our general fund and what we do is we collect revenue from citizens or users of these three utilities. And then we spend the money on either capital projects or maintenance operations or staff who do the maintenance operations work. And what we basically do is we conduct something called the utility rate study, which is what this is kind of hinting at, where we're using some of the terms that are similar to a rate study. This specifically will be 2024, I'll get to that in a second. A rate study will look at a past picture of how much revenue we have received in actual revenues versus what we have actually. Sorry, let me take the word actually back so many times. We have actuals in terms of revenue and we have the estimate that we thought we were going to take in as revenue. There's oftentimes a discrepancy and what we're looking at is how big is that discrepancy? Where does it show up and what is it doing over time? That way we can properly model our revenues. And then what we'll do is we'll take a look at what we're forecasted to do in the future in terms of capital projects and our maintenance and operation requirements to maintain those capital facilities. So we'll take a look at things like water main replacements or as we're all very familiar, there's a waste treatment facility three. It's a very large project, a very big capital project that had a lot of expense to produce it and it's being constructed right now. We reviewed that project as a list of many elements as part of our system plans. So we have three system plans that go with our three utilities. Gets a little crazy there for a while, but when you kind of break it down, you see that our system plans try to help guide us on what we need going forward for capital and for maintenance and operation. So what we do is we take the utility rate study activities. We basically chart our future and we try to come up with a rate or a simplify it, but a bill or how much we're going to charge our users to cover the future costs that we expect in each year. So it gets complicated if we have a complicated list of projects, which we often do. And it gets even more complicated when we don't meet actuals in terms of revenue or we don't meet actuals in terms of how much we think things are going to cost in the future. So what we're doing today is not a full utility rate study. This isn't looking over the next six years, but we're actually discussing what 2024 has will look like in what our anticipated revenues are for it. So the, to take a little bit of the thunder out of the slide, which I'm sorry to do. We took a look at 2024 and we have some concerns about both where the revenue was in actuals versus predicted and how much projects are costing in the future as well as right now in 2024. With those realities made apparent by time, we now have a recommendation that we'll get to at the end of this presentation that I'll let Sergey take off in a second. And the ordinance that goes with it is related to making the changes that are recommended here. So I'll let that slide, the presentation, I'll let Sergey take over from FCS Group and I can come back around to all these details as we go. But Sergey, just a sec.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two quick comments because I think it'll really help people put in, you know, keep things in mind as they hear Sergey's presentation because there's a lot to it. In fact, we already just received the whole bunch, just in those few minutes, great job. Legally, we operate one utility. Okay, why does this matter? It just, there's legal reasons why that matters, but what it boils down to is we have three elements of our utility, right? Our water, our sewer. So we think about setting rates, we don't think about, we charge rates for each one of those elements. But the whole thing is actually operated as one utility. So I just mentioned that in case, you know, at some point you worry about, oh, well, what happens if this or that? They're good questions, but since it is one utility, there is sort of a given play. For example, when you go look at some of the capital funds, it all sort of gets jammed together into a single utility capital fund, which makes sense because they actually, it's one utility with three elements to it. I just want to mention that. And then the other thing is, here's the thing, just key thing to know about utilities. The majority of our costs, by far, the majority of our costs are capital costs, not operating costs. Right, so all our employees getting the water out of the river or out of the wells every year, that's actually well less than half of the money we spend. It's all the capital cost to make all of that work and keep making it work into the future is where actually the majority of the costs are. That's important to realize because as you think about things, capital costs, maybe I do it this year or maybe I do it one year later, there's a little bit of flex there, but it's always dangerous because you flex that, you run the risk that well, something breaks that shouldn't have, because you should have replaced it on time or, you know. So, but also you'll see from Sergey, things get projected out a long way. And we make, we make estimates, when do we think we ought to do that? And then that gets refined and that's why you keep redoing rate studies every few years and you refine all that. And so I just, I just want to sort of make sure everyone kind of knew that, so we have a basis to understand what Sergey is now going to run us through.
Absolutely. All right, Sergey, I believe we are good to go. Yeah, go ahead and jump in.
All right, thank you, Dylan, and thank you, council members, for taking the time to meet with me today. Now, before I dive in, can everybody hear me okay and see the presentation that I'm sharing?
Yep.
Yes.
Great, well, again, thanks for joining me to talk about the results of the 2024 fiscal health review for the three utilities or one enterprise fund. As was just mentioned, but before we dive into the content of the presentation, just wanted to go over a quick overview of the overall PowerPoint. Just, just to set the stage, we're going to start out the discussion with a high level overview of the rate setting process, just to make sure we have the key terms out of the way and everybody's familiar with them. Then we'll talk about the background, just a quick refresher in terms of what were some of the decisions that were made last time, just to give you some context of our discussion to come. And then we'll focus on the findings for that 2024 fiscal year, starting with the sewer utility, water and the stormwater utility. Feel free to ask questions as we go. So from a high level perspective, if you look at a comprehensive cost of service rate study as we're about to undertake in 2024 for the utilities, it can be summarized into three key distinct steps that need to be performed from a technical perspective and these steps have to be performed sequentially. We usually start with identifying the overall needs for each utility and I'm going to refer to water sewer and stormwater utilities on their own, even though they're currently organized since last year as one utility fund. But from a rate paying perspective and cost tracking perspective, I'm going to be referring them as independent utilities. Now, step one focuses on making sure that we can identify those and maintain those needs on a, not just today, but into the future. And really from a cost recovery perspective, we want to make sure that each utility can be self-sufficient. If we have water customers, they don't have sewer service, we want to avoid having those customers pay for sewer that they're not utilizing. So from a rate setting perspective, we want to be self-sufficient and independent from one utility to another. Now, at this point of the analysis, we're not quite focusing on how much revenue should be generated from each cost of service, really focusing if our rates can be, can maintain our ongoing obligations and if not, what is the overall strategy that needs to be done to get us there? Step number two dives a little bit deeper and looks at inter-class cost allocation through the cost of service analysis. And this is where we really try to answer the question if cost differences exist to provide service to different customer classes. So if you think of step one as identifying the size of the pie of costs that we need to cover, step two really focuses on identifying how big each slice of the pie needs to be that's associated with each class. So is residential playing their allocated share of costs? Or do they need to be adjusted up or down and similarly for all other classes of service? Finally, step number three, this is where we developed actual fixed and variable charges assessed to your customers. Now, going back to the prior study, the last comprehensive analysis completed for the city, all three utilities was performed in around 2020, it was a fairly comprehensive study spanning between 2020 and 21. And we had quite a bit of discussion meetings with, I think, 10 meetings overall between committees and council to kind of get a handle on our forecast for all the three steps we just talked about. Now, because we were just undertaking or getting into the global pandemic, folks were staying home and not able to work. The council at that time wanted to provide some relief and no rate action was implemented in 2021. After that, focusing on the revenue requirement portion, we did have a multi-year rate strategy that was adopted for the water utility. Now, again, this is step one where we focus just on the big picture in terms of overall revenue needs without diving into where those needs, where those revenues are coming from. The water utility was looking at 3.7% annual rate increases, sewer at 2% or so, annual increases and stormwater about 5.1%. Moving on to that second step, inter-class cost allocation, we did find that there were some inter-class differences that existed. So if you look at the tables down below, you'll notice that there's negative numbers and positive numbers. And what this basically means, if a number is negative, it implies that the class is paying more than their allocated share of costs and needs to go down if we were to resolve the issue right away. And the number is positive, that we need to go up if we were to resolve the issue right away. And usually there's a range of reasonableness, if we're within about 10% plus or minus of the overall average of the system average increase, we can be considered within the range of reasonableness and no adjustments outside the average need to be implemented. Now, I know this is a lot of information and we'll get into it a lot more details when we talk about the overall, when we get into the study itself next year, but this is just to provide you some context of some of the decisions and discussions that were made. And what this is showing is that the multifamily class of service was paying more than their allocated share of costs and the non-residential class of services were not quite paying enough. During the discussions that we had with the committees and the council at the time, we wanted to balance our impacts to any individual customer groups whilst making progress towards cost of service. So gradual phases and strategy was developed, progressing non-residential accounts and classes of service towards about 40% progress of cost of service by 26 with the phases and strategy to be revisited during the next study. So what that meant that we actually lowered our multifamily class, not quite 25% as you saw in the prior slide or the sewer utility share, but a gradual reduction over time while non-residential customers increased slightly above the average increase to make progress towards their targets. Now, the discussion centered around a holistic approach where we looked at water, sewer and stormwater together. So you'll notice a table down below showing the actual average bill for typical customer within each class of service for all three utilities. So this is where we started to look at things on a combined basis. We know that multifamily needs to go down for the two utilities, but because there's also stormwater rate increase, what we wanted to target is a neutral combined impact for the multifamily class, so no impacts altogether. So taking all three utilities, all steps together, we're targeting about 3.1% increase for residential customers on average, no increase for multifamily and then commercial ranging from 3.6 to 4.4% per year. On the rate design front, because we did quite a bit of a rework during the 2016 study, no structural changes were proposed this time around. So any increases that were proposed under the first two steps were simply applied across the border proportionally to the fixed and variable charges for all utilities. Finally, in addition to the ongoing rates, we did update the one-time fees imposed and new development through general facility charges. These charges were first established in 2016 during the 2016 study and then further updated during the 2020 study. Since then, these charges have been updated to keep up with construction cost inflation since they are tied to the cost of capital infrastructure in the ground as well as necessary to allow the growth to connect. But in general, these charges were updated and indexed into the future. So I know that was just a lot of information, but it hopefully provides you a little bit of a reminder and refresher of what was done last time. Now, for this time, since the study was completed around 2020 time period, 2020, beginning of 2021, there have been some significant changes that have occurred. The impacts from the global pandemic are still continuing to leave their traces as well as other global events. The war have caused supply chain issues which have magnified the cost of goods and inflation. So some of the inflation figures that we are anticipating during the prior study have been significantly higher. And depending on what sector, especially in the capital materials services side, have increased more than tenfold, again, specifically focusing on type of construction materials. So before we get underway to performing a whole study for all utilities focusing on cost of service and everything we just talked about, the city wanted to do a quick pulse check to make sure the strategy we have in place for 2024 is still appropriate or if we can do something preemptively ahead of time, help us smooth over the impacts over time instead of doing a lower increase and then potentially having to counter adjust and having much higher increases into the future. So for this analysis, what we wanted to do is start out by looking at how we have performed from in terms of actual performance versus what we budgeted, which can help us inform not only this effort, but also the full study. We also wanted to take the analysis performed last time and make a couple tweaks. So using the same models, we wanted to include the latest budget projections for both O and M and capital. We wanted to take a look at how growth has materialized or has not for both ongoing rates and these one-time fees, general facility charges, and then update the latest fund balances to see if things would change for the 2024 projection. Again, focusing only on 24 with the future years to be revisited next year. So we'll start the discussion with the sewer and first we'll take a look at that comparison, how we have we fared from in terms of how we forecasted our revenues expenses versus what actually happened. So we're going to look at the last three years, 2020 through 2022. And what you're looking at here is a table summarizing the three key elements of our revenue requirement. The first one is revenues with the proposed rate adjustments. The middle portion of the table looks at operating maintenance expenses and the bottom portion of the table shows the annual capital from a total perspective. Now, if we look at the revenues first, especially in the last two years, we can see that our revenue projections have been higher than actual revenues realized. So what this is telling us is we've been generating less revenues than we anticipated. And without having the time to really dive into where the differences are coming from, the key differences we noticed were coming from the residential class, the casino class and reclaimed water class of service, primarily a residential class. Now, the one item that we know is that revenues are assessed to residential customers are 100% fixed, there's no volume component. So really, the difference in our minds just from preliminary review is coming from growth. The growth has not been materializing at the same levels as the comprehensive planning efforts anticipated and some of the developments that thought were going to come in have not materialized to date. Looking at the middle table, our O and M expenses are performing fairly well. We're actually staying at or slightly below or above depending on the year. Again, you're always going to have slight variation, so staying within 3% of budget in the last two years has been really good. And our capital execution has been a little bit behind schedule in terms of budget. So we are executing on average about 24%. Now, we do have some agreements in place and timings in place for the completion of our treatment plan. So I anticipate that the execution of the capital plan the next year or two should speed up and come in closer to budget. So what does that mean for the sewer utility from a considerations perspective? Well, the really, the big question that's in the air that we really needed to dive into during the big study is what's going to happen with growth and why this is so important is because again, it impacts your not only ongoing monthly revenues, but also one-time fees. Now, the prior study anticipated growth levels of 1.2% to 2.5%. Specifically, the 2.5% assumption was in 2023 and in 2024. Kind of, we had this higher year with several developments anticipated to come in and join the system at that time. To date, from our discussions with your staff, it does not appear any, almost or almost any GFCs have come in in 2023 and we were anticipating or projecting $1.8 million to be used towards our capital improvement program or debt service. We're also anticipating about the same level, 1.9 million in '24, followed by $1 million thereafter. So the big question in the air is what's going to happen with growth? Because we're already, you know, just in 2023, behind close to $1.8 million. Looking at our O and M expenses, the budget for 2024 compared to our projections in the 2020 study is $310,000 above those prior projections, again, in line with the higher than anticipated inflation. Now, these figures, the $310,000 does not include the current labor negotiations that are going with the city. So still potentially could go up as well. So in order for us to be able to provide some level of impact analysis, we wanted to look at two bookend scenarios or options for your consideration. Number one, option one is what I'm calling a conservative option, which looks at what happens if we just have no growth occurring in the next four years and really focusing on 2024. Option two is what we're calling an optimistic option, which would basically say we're going to go back to the 2020 plan and assume that growth will materialize at those higher levels in '24 and then go down to about 1% thereafter. So it's kind of a bookend scenario and there could be options somewhere in between. But again, there could be an infinite amount of scenarios that we can run, so we wanted to provide some bookends for discussion purposes. So what we really wanted to test is can we hold the 1.95% or 2% increase that was projected for 2024? Now, what we're finding initially is that without taking into account any labor negotiations that are ongoing and additional inflationary pressures, we could hold the strategy, assuming we're comfortable with slightly dipping into our reserves in, within the next couple of years. And the reason why we're able to do that for this utility is that because the casino has contributed, I believe, a little over $5 million in general facility charges towards the treatment plant upgrade project, which was not originally anticipated in the 2020 study. So because of this one-time GFC contribution from the casino for that treatment project, it is helping us meet the projections even though our revenues are behind and our O and M is anticipated to be higher. Now, if we wanted to be safe from balancing our impacts in the future perspective, we may want to consider making a modification to the plan in anticipation of the additional inflation and budgetary impacts of about 3%. So this is an item bookend to consider, it's a pretty tight bookend for the sewer utility. The original plan is 2%. If we wanted to hedge against the growth and anticipate the growth does not materialize, we will have some additional costs. We may want to consider 3%. So overall, pretty good position for now for the sewer utility with a tight band of 2% to 3%.
One moment, there's a question, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Just question. Currently 2%, the stated 3% is that in replace of or instead of the 2%?
It would be in place of, so instead of doing a 2%, it would be a 3% adjustment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions before we want to water? Okay, and we can always come back. So moving on to the water utility, very similar information here. You'll notice that again, looking at the rate revenues, we'll notice unlike on the sewer utility side, the last two years, we've either come in above budget or slightly below by $36,000, but pretty much right on budget. So it kind of made us scratch our head a little bit because the utilities are so tied together. Now, what we also know for water utilities is that unlike on the sewer side, all customers are paying a volume component of the rate. So to do a quick comparison, we wanted to take a look at what's been happening with our weather patterns because our water revenues are so dependent on preliminary, particularly summer conditions. So what you'll notice at the table to the right is some key metrics that we look at when we look at weather data and impacts on consumption. The first one being cooling degree days, which shows how warm it was. Basically, temperatures above 55 to 65 degrees, how many days have exceeded that? And rainfall in terms of inches of precipitation. So you'll notice that our baseline year for the analysis was 2019 and compared to the last four years, it was the most mild year during that time horizon. 2020 was pretty close to 2019, but then the last two years, we had a pretty hot heat wave, if you may, a pretty high heat wave in '21, if you may remember, and then of June and August, and then a pretty warm summer in '22. So last two years, what we noticed is that has been hotter than the baseline year and had less rain and more dry than that time period. So the big question becomes, and this is where it might be beneficial to do a longer-term averaging perspective, is was the baseline appropriate year? Or are the last two years more in line with historical averages for planning purposes? Because if last two years have been more anomalies and we go back down to the baseline levels, our revenues will dip as well. So that's an item that needs to be investigated during the next update. On the expense front, we have been spending less money than anticipated and primarily the difference is when we did a high-level review of expenses is coming from unfilled positions and then the associated professional services, because we just don't have the staff to perform those professional services. So it does appear that this utility is not able to fill all the positions that were included in the budget and are not able to execute all the expenses in that O and M. On the capital front, we're a little bit better at executing or closer at executing our capital improvement program. We're around 71% looking at the three-year average. So on the sewer side, it was closer to 24, three-year average here, we're closer to 71. So in terms of considerations for 2024, general facility charges and growth are a big component of the water utilities forecast as well. Here, it's closer to $1.3 million of unanticipated GFC revenue that we were planning for in '23, which again, has not materialized. And we were anticipating 1.4 million to come in in '24 with $700,000 thereafter. Depending what happens with growth, similar to the sewer discussion, this has a pretty material impact to our analysis. On the expense front, without taking into consideration the current labor negotiations, we are showing that the current budget is fairly closely in line with the 2020 study, which is great news, staying close. But again, that does not include the latest potential cost impacts that could occur. We ran the same two options for considerations in terms of a conservative option with no growth and an optimistic option where the growth returns in 2024. Based on these findings, if we stay with a 3.7% scenario and the conservative option materializes, we would need higher than 3.7% increases in 2025 and thereafter and more debt. So we were historic, in the past study, we were anticipating that we will need some new debt proceeds in 2025 approximately. If growth does not materialize and growth is tied significantly to that GFC revenue, which helps us pay for capital, we would have to go out to the bonding market if we want to try to keep the rate scenario on a lower front. Alternatively, we can get into other options during the next bigger study, which looks at capital timing, but that's a much more comprehensive process. The optimistic option would actually allow us to stay close to the 3.7% increases. Now, because we do have some inflationary pressures on the horizon and the additional budgetary impacts that may be coming, one option that we looked at is adjusting the 3.7% for '24 to about 6% to help us keep the future years as smooth as possible. Because again, if the more conservative option materializes and we all. and we only do three point seven in twenty four, the future increases would have to be higher, six percent or even higher than that, depending on what actually shakes out during that time period. That's the water utility. And then finally, on the stormwater front, we are showing that revenues, looking at the upper chart, are staying close or slightly above budget levels. This makes us a little bit a little bit scratch our heads, because again, revenues on the sewer side are primarily fixed and we're coming in lower. So the the only way without again spending a bit bit of time of day within diving into data, we anticipate that there is a couple of non residential developments that had large impervious surface areas that were added to the system that were not anticipated before. So here, we definitely want to take a look at why our revenues are a little bit higher compared to the sewer utility and probably the water utility. This is great news for the projection, but we also still gives us a bit of a concern what will happen into the future. On the O N M front, we were behind budget, spending a little bit less, but have caught up since then. And based on the review of data and talking to your staff, it does appear that we just had some until positions in twenty twenty and gradually filled the position over the last two years. So we have been coming closer and closer to executing our O N M expenses, they close to budget. And finally, our annual capital improvement program on average is around seventy three percent execution rate. But if you notice twenty one, we have quite a bit higher capital and quite a bit lower in twenty. If you average twenty and twenty one together, we're right on. So it could be just a a timing issue of of execution, because we're only looking at a three year horizon. So there potentially is more of a lag lead type of occurrence that's going on. So considerations for the stormwater utility, unlike water and sewer utilities, the general facility charge revenue is not a substantial portion of the overall rates and support for our capital improvement program. We're projecting, we were projecting GFCs quite a bit lower, unlike the one and a half to two million dollar range in the high years for water and sewer. We're looking at eighty two thousand dollars to forty two thousand dollars, so a much lower impact, even if we miss the forecast here. Now, the revenue projections are more impactful from a ongoing monthly perspective. But again, we did see that on the prior slide that we had been coming in slightly above projections as well. On expense front, our O N M is projected to come in at three hundred sixty three thousand dollars above our twenty twenty rate study levels. And again, these these figures do not include labor negotiations that are ongoing for the city currently. So running the same options of conservative, no growth and optimistic original scenario, we have on this slide the alternatives. So if we try to stay with a five point one percent adjustment for twenty four, again, and growth does not happen, primarily looking at the impacts on the ongoing monthly rate revenue, we will be very tight on our reserves outside of twenty four. So it will push us towards or below reserve levels for a couple of years outside of the twenty twenty four period. This is where it gets a little bit murky this time around, because we're not doing that full comprehensive update just due to timing that we've had when we started this effort. Now, looking at the optimistic optimistic option, the the scenarios would materialize fairly close to the prior projection. If we see additional inflationary pressures and growth does not materialize in the next couple of years, it may be worth it to ma- make an adjustment for that inflation that we've been seeing and bump up the five point one percent increase closer to seven and a quarter percent. So the bookends for the stormwater are the currently adopted five point one or a seven and a quarter percent, just to keep the future impacts in line or at a lower level without having peaks and valleys every year. So bringing everything together, on this slide, you'll see the alternatives for consideration for all three utilities. On the sewer utility side, our original plan was a two percent adjustment. Now, if you may remember from the background slide, that two percent was slightly different by class of service. So there's that a cost of service phase in that we talked about, where some classes like multifamily were going down on the sewer front, while others were going up slightly above two percent to for the weighted average for the system to be at two percent. If the the council prefers to go with option two, which would bump up the two percent to three percent overall, we just don't have the information right now to make the same class specific adjustment. So this would be applied equally to all classes at three percent. So unlike the option one alternative, where the two percent would be spread differently a little bit by cost of service, if we want to hedge against inflation and additional cost pressures and bump it up to three, that three percent will be equally applied to all classes of service, and then cost of service will be revisited next year during that more comprehensive update. Similarly, for the water utility, the three point seven percent is option one. That would follow the cost of service strategy that that has been adopted for twenty four. If the council wants to hedge against inflation and having a peak year in the next couple of years, if growth does not materialize, all classes would have to be adjusted by six percent. So instead of having a class specific increases, option one, it would be all classes for option two at six percent. Finally, stormwater, we're anticipating five point one percent. If we wanted to be a little bit more conservative and and basically not anticipate any growth, like we have not been seeing, a seven and a quarter percent would be applicable instead. And the final slide I want to share with you is an average residential bill impact. So what you're looking at here is an average bill for a customer that uses seven hundred cubic feet or seven CCF on a monthly basis, a fixed sewer bill on a monthly basis and a stormwater bill. Currently, this type of a customer is paying a hundred sixty nine dollars and forty cents for all three utilities. Again, sometimes folks only think of it as a water bill. This is actually a water, a sewer and a stormwater bill, three separate services. The adopters' original strategy would increase it by five dollars and twenty cents to a hundred seventy four dollars and sixty cents or three point one percent rounding there. And the modified plan would bump it up by eight dollars to a hundred seventy seven dollars and forty three cents or four and three quarters percent. So combined, it would be a change of about one one point seven percent or so. And really, with that, that kind of brings us to the end of the discussion. Here, now we're open for questions eh eh as well as some feedback in terms of your thoughts about the two options for each utility. If you do deviate from the original adopted plan, if you wanted the rates to be in effect in January, a second reading would have to be done sometime in early December. I believe that the the meeting is on December eleventh. So if the plan were to deviate from the original strategy and the the implementations date of January first is held, it is it is pretty tight in terms of timing. And then after that, a comprehensive study would get underway, focusing on all the major components and all the the questions and the details, starting in twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Can we go back two slides is probably the talking slide? All right, there. So on the on the high end of things, you kept the C I P plan as is in that projection?
The C I P plan was revised based on the best information provided to us by your staff. So it was adjusted to account the current timing, because especially on the wastewater or sewer side, due to the latest agreements you you that were made since the twenty study, the timing had to change for some of the big projects.
It tracks with the current C I P, but the utility rate study that we conducted in twenty twenty one is different, because it didn't include us speeding up some of the waste treatment facility activities and combining them into one waste treatment facility three.
Which was a savings to us.
Yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, I'd agree, outside of the inflationary impacts to time, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, inflation is going to happen. There's there's no, you can argue against gravity, it doesn't do you any good. I'm just, in the study to come, though, if we are expecting a slower growth rate than what we've had, the overall C I P plan would have to be adjusted, and that will drive a different cost projection for us in that larger study. We don't have benefit of that at this stage. We're making we're making adjustments for agreement and current project performance. Okay, so I would expect that to extend the C I P out a little bit from what we're seeing right now, which will adjust that larger larger plan, which I'm I'm kind of arguing that I I'm a little uncomfortable going all the way to the second bullet in each column. I think in sewer, I'm not going to argue between two and three percent. And I'll inflation will be more than three percent, so three percent is probably a good a good adjustment there. In water, again, because we haven't adjusted that C I P program, we're going on, growth is a little slower, our projects are a little slower too than what we projected, which is which is normal. We no plan survives reality, touch with reality, okay? They always extend out for some reason or another. But we always conservatively project that we're going to do it at a specific rate in time. Okay, so I'm I'm a little leery of jumping the next two for the full second bullet. But I don't, I don't think the old plan will be sufficient. It's somewhere in between, and that twenty twenty four study will show us. My gut projection is take the two numbers, take the average on those two and run with that and let the twenty twenty four study really show us what it ought to be based on rolling all those assumptions in on growth, projects, inflation, everything into a comprehensive study in which we got some hard numbers to go for.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, or sorry, customer mayor, yes.
The other Holloway.
I am, I agree with all Councilmember Holloway's comments. I think that's that's just absolutely accurate. The one thing I would add, though, to his comments is inflation. Inflation is much higher, much higher, as we know, for these C I P projects than we were planning for it to be back in twenty twenty when we did this look forward. So I I do think that because of the impact of inflation, that may largely, see, we don't know. So I can't say it'll largely offset, it'll somehow offset, we don't know how much until we do the full rate study. But I do think there's an argument to move back towards six percent. I'm looking at water in particular, because because while it's true on the there's some savings on projects, they have them a little sooner, which means they'll which we did in order to save money. So we'll get that benefit. But on the other hand, we've had the inflationary costs on all the rest of the projects and on that project. So there's a lot of moving parts. So you know, I'm not sure I see all good news there. And then on that, I would just say, right now, our utility system doesn't have debt. But our plan is to take on debt to get these projects done, meaning we're not generating enough out of utility rates to pay for these projects. Now, that's a whole long discussion about something called generational equity. Who should pay for the improvements, right? The people that are going to use them through their rates or us who may not be here then, right? So there's no one answer to that. It's it's an opinion thing, but it's it's a whole part of the the thing here. But we are talking about moving towards taking on debt. So the sooner we take on, you know, the later we take on debt, I think matters. So just quick three other things I just wanted to say is our rates in Snoqualmie, our utility rates are below average for our area, they're well below many of our neighboring cities. That's an important thing to realize, even these proposed rates are below average. Keep that in mind. The GFCs that Sergey talked about, these GFCs and the different systems that haven't come in, understand many of those will not come in. Why? What was in those projections in twenty twenty was two big things happening in the future. The sooner one will never happen. That's the Salish expansion, it's never going to happen. Those GFCs are never going to come in. The second thing was the mill site development, which we expect will happen. And you know, that'll get refined in the next studies to timing and cost, but you know, that's probably in there, okay? But a bunch of those GFCs, and so Sergey kind of couched it with, well, do you expect that growth to come? I would just point out, I don't. So that has me worried that delaying reaction to that. Here's the thing, folks, if we don't react now and then we get a study next year, just picking on water for a minute, what if that's six percent? Is eight, nine, ten percent? By the way, folks understand that inflation is hitting right now and that there may be some rate impacts. The farther you get away from that, the more they're scratching their head going, wait, what? Well, the way we would have got there is we would have dug into our reserves, meaning the money we set aside for future projects, bringing that debt all the closer, and then we're going to, you know, then have to react then. So I'm really nervous about not moving in reaction. Then my final point is, on our operating costs, we added several positions, this biennium, that didn't exist in the utility, several positions that didn't exist for now. In twenty twenty four, that's offset, because we have a whole bunch of positions we couldn't fill. So for twenty twenty four, it's exactly what Sergey said, hey, you know, not so bad. But here's the point, the commitment is administration plans to build those positions early in twenty twenty four. So those costs are coming, and if we don't cover them, so it's not just, remember, the costs that are in here don't include costs of union, you know, you know, pay increases for our employees. Well, they include a an old assumption, which we know is going to come in much higher. And number two, we're having to cover these additional positions. So for all of those reasons, I I sort of take Councilmember Holloway's argument aboard, and I I think it's a reasonable argument. I feel I lean more towards the adjusted amounts here, but you know, for the reasons I just said. So that's my point of view.
Pastor Benson?
I just have two things. One of them is a response to what Councilman Mayhew was saying. I think when we're trying to decide who's going to pay for it, people now or people in the future, I think it's as soon as we're talking about taking on debt to do it, we need to we need to nip that in the bud, because we can't afford to to carry debt long term, because we think people in the future should pay for it. I think we have to keep up for it, because in the future, there's going to be improvements that have to happen anyway. So that's not going to be a cycle that ends. People are always going to have to be paying for these improvements. The other question, the the question that I had is that when we were looking at the rates that residents residential people were paying as opposed to commercial people, I may have not understood those numbers and the way they were written, but it the way that they were written and the way that 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 was explained made it sound to me like for a couple of years, our residences have been overpaying for utilities while our commercial have been underpaying. And eh eh did I misunderstand that or?
It's a complicated thing to unpack, I think.
I know, but I try to, I I just, it it has to be in like four year old.
Sergey, can you go to slide, yeah, the three or four?
Was I was I understanding that correctly or incorrectly?
You can see water, sewer, the choose most, some of them go up and.
So the way the way it was explained, it sounded like the negative numbers meant that they were overpaying. And the positive numbers meant that they were underpaying. Some of those positive numbers are the biggest numbers in those charts, eighty two percent, thirty one percent. It's so, I so yeah, yeah, what I'm wondering is 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 there an unfair distribution in the way that these are getting paid?
So to answer your question, based on the findings of the twenty twenty study, the cost of service analysis did indicate that in the water utility, the multifamily class was paying more than their share of allocated costs as well as in the sewer side. And the the commercial, commercial was actually within the range of reasonableness, while retail irrigation was outside and not quite covering their costs. On the sewer's front, the strength based customers, the high customers were not quite paying their allocated sure cost in the reclaimed water, while residential multifamily was paying more. And there's quite a few meetings that went on, again, just due to time and brevity discussions, same questions arose. And the question that came up was, how do we set it right, get it towards the towards equal distribution of costs in terms of what the allocation indicated? And a gradual strategy was developed. So on this slide, again, instead of having a three point seven percent increase in every year in twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, we were projecting that multifamily would actually decrease by one and a quarter percent or so to make progress towards cost of service. Now, because overall increase is three point seven, the progress that they will be making is actually a four, close to five percent progress, because they were going down on an average increase of close to four percent.
I missed the part where you explained that that was being addressed, so thank you for.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, not a problem. I know it's a lot of information, I apologize for having so much, it's just eh just complicated, okay?
But we we take one more comment and then we will adjourn. So we can let the big group come in and we can get on with our consummating, customer, me, Mayhew.
Quick comment on that, for the last two rate studies, we've had some imbalances, we've had some rates not where we wanted to be. So we've had a lot of discussion about what's the path to get those where they need to be. And so what we've sort of. And so what we've sort of said, look, we want to make significant progress each time. And so what we've tried to do is basically hold those that are paying too much flat. Those are paying too little, put all the increase against. So this is broad. I mean, they're specific very, but broadly, that was the idea. And then, you know, we developed over the last two cycles, we took actually our commercial and broke into the high volume, low volume. So we actually created two classes there. So we've been trying to move more and more towards equity in that distribution. We think we're making good progress, but. There's still room to go in in the next rate.
Pastor Johnson, quick one.
Yeah, very quick. Um, first of all, yeah, I I don't perceive any growth happening within the next year that's of any sort of significant note. Um, but also just on that last point. Uh, and someone could correct it if I'm wrong, but I think that if we just were to suddenly rebalance those things, that'd be a massive shock to our commercial sector. To suddenly make that all balance out. Um, so stepping it over time, I think is uh, the best is even though it leaves us in an inequitable position for a while.
No, but you let that study to come guide us.
Right.
Yeah, right now we're kind of doing thumb things and I wouldn't knee jerk that kind of thing.
Absolutely, definitely.
Right. So we will also be discussing this um, during the council meeting as well. So there be no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Just move by Councilwoman and second by Councilwoman Washington, all in favor, CI. Right, we are adjourned. Right. Good evening. We just completed a roundtable and now this brings us to our regular meeting of the city council. The time is now 7:00 PM. So records show that all council is present. Council, please stand and join me in seeing the pledge of allegiance and customer Johnson, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all.
All right. And move on to the first item of business to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda. Move by Council Johnson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, CI.
Hi.
Any opposed name? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. Next item is the police chief confirmation oath of office. So council, I'm asking for confirmation of Brian Lynch as the chief of police of this Snoqualmie Police Department effective December 1st, 2023. Brian has been serving as interim police chief since June 2023. Prior to that, he served as a Snoqualmie police captain. Um, since stepping forward to lead the department, he, I have been impressed with his strong leadership, his track record of accomplishments. And he has filled multiple police officer positions, streamlined administrative processes and have boosted department morale. Brian Lynch is a North Bend resident and has over two decades of law enforcement experience. Serving as in Black Diamond and Anamclaw Police Departments before joining Snoqualmie in 2022. He also served as the commander of the Coalition of Small Police Agencies Major Crimes Task Force. Before, before starting in law enforcement, he worked in the emergency medical services field. Council may have a motion to confirm Brian Lynch as the city of Snoqualmie Police Chief effective December 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Move by um, Councilperson Benson and second by Councilperson Christensen. Council, do we have any questions or discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Point of question, uh, as a regular agenda build, we uh, open for public comment or?
In pass for confirmation, we have not had public comment. Councilwoman, did you have your hand up? Oh, wait. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none. All those approve of confirmation of our new police chief, Brian Lynch, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, it is unanimous and congratulations. We're going to have um, City Clerk Dean administer the oath of office and then we'll do the pinning and also take pictures. Raise your right. I say your name.
I, Brian Lynch.
Having been duly appointed to the Office of Police Chief of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Having been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council of the city of Snoqualmie to the Office of Police Chief of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
That I will, and I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the laws and the constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
God, Brian. You can do this every morning?
Thank you, Mayor Ross and city council members.
Chief Lynch, I invite you to say a few words.
I thought all day that I would have time to write a speech. Meeting after meeting, here I am without one. On my way here today from my house tonight. The uh, the gravity of the situation hit me. My, the memories of my life were just like rolling through like a movie reel. So. I never sought out to to be a police chief. Uh, but the position I feel chose me and um, just want to let you know until the citizens of Snoqualmie. These stars are very heavy and I understand the weight of them. And I can assure you that. The mayor and the city council have made the right decision because I am the man to wear that. So I thank you very much. Thank you.
So don't go too far away. So that brings us to the police officers swearing in ceremony for Michael Peter. So I'll hand it over to Chief Lynch to do introductions. As well as I will then administer the oath of, oath of office. Thank you.
Well, as my first. My first act of uh, being the full-time chief, it my pleasure um, to bring up Officer Michael Peter. If you can come up here. Where is he? So Officer Peter um, has just graduated the academy. And he is currently in the beginning stages of his three to four month training, his field training. But the impact that he has made on our department just in the time since he's been hired has been immense. Um, this kid has fit in with the family. I joke to other people, I don't know if I've ever told him, but um, I see him probably standing up here and taking the oath of office of a chief someday. Um, I think he's that caliber. So he was, he comes to us from the the Bay Area, was born and raised in San Ramon, California. Um, and graduated high school in 2017. I still have clothes that I wear from 2017. And then he came up here and he started playing baseball at Central Washington University and played for five years. So he's decided to be a police officer after going um, to Central Washington, getting his bachelor's degree in law and justice and sociology. He has, like I said, he is, he's that kind of guy that people just want to be around. I, as a brand new recruit before he ever left to the academy, I'm like, hey, let's go play a round of golf. And he was, you know, I, he's that kind of guy. He just. His personality um, is and the way that he carries himself is going to take him a long way. I think this was a great hire. And I think the the citizens can be proud of this police officer. Um, so when you see him on the street, come up and. And thank him and and introduce yourself. So this, you would love to get to know him.
So I say your name.
Hi, Michael Peter.
Have been duly appointed to the Office of Police Officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Have been duly appointed to the Office of Police Officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer Peter, did you want to say a few words?
It's really hard to back up what Chief was saying there today earlier about what he said, but um, I'm very excited. It's a totally new career, totally new, something new, but um, I'm really excited to try to get to know the city and all the citizens and everything. But I think it's, I think in the aspect of the chief, we all, I think the entire department wanted Brian. We knew that we wanted Brian as our chief because. Like he said, I was a crew the day that he took me to go golfing. I told people at the academy that. I went, actually went golfing with, he was captain at the time and they couldn't believe me that a small department has someone that actually. Cares about recruit like that. So I think that you guys did a great job. Whole city did a great job in choosing um, a great chief. And I'm very excited to work for the city of Snoqualmie and thank you.
Great, thank you. Right. Next item is Department of Ecology 2022 Wastewater Treatment Plant Outstanding Performance Award.
Ooh, this sounds exciting, huh?
I think what I will do is I will leave this mask out of this room so you guys can get some work done. Thank you very much.
Hey, how's it, how's it? Still broken. Any better than yesterday?
Heard me, Mayor. Are we expected to stay here? Can you see a buddy? Glad you made it. Hey, you're gonna get a flag for excessive stripes. Nice job. It's like fifteen yards.
Hey, you do exist. You can see on a Thursday morning.
All right. Okay. Now it continues. So. The Snoqualmie. Okay, the Snoqualmie wastewater treatment plant and reclaimed water facility has a great record as one of the top municipal wastewater treatment plants in Washington. Based on the affluent limits, submittals and overall plant compliance. Ecology would like to commend the team for their perseverance, dedication and award-winning efforts. It takes pronounced effort and teamwork to operate and maintain a wastewater treatment plant in top running order. So today we have several of the employees here. I'd like to invite you to come forward and we will, we will um. We have a plaque that we will give you. And so we have Tom Holmes, wastewater department supervisor. Jason George, wastewater lead operator and Alec Bagley, wastewater operation, operator. And there's two others, Lyle Beach, wastewater technician and Ryan Delzil, wastewater operator who are not here this evening, so. Right, so outstanding performance award 2022. Washington State Department of Ecology recognizes exemplary effort and work accomplished by the city of Snoqualmie and. the dedicated team at this Snoqualmie Water Reclamation, Reclamation Facility. Thank you for protecting and keeping Washington's water clean.
Counsel. I no longer supervise these guys, but I did supervise them for about a year and it was my honor to supervise them. I knew I could count on them. They were oftentimes the troubleshooters that I went to for, for solutions. Which is an honorable thing when you work in public works. You always want to be one of the people that is, is on the solving problems side of the scorecard. And those three right there are definitely on that side of the scorecard. So I miss leading them, but thanks, guys. I know what that means.
So recently, this new city Snoqualmie received the King County RE Plus Award. So it's been one year since the King County RE Plus Plan launched with a goal of zero waste. And Snoqualmie signed the RE Plus Pledge. And recently, Councilor Walton attended an event to accept the award. Councilor Walton, would you like to explain the award?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I had the honor of representing the entire council and the mayor at a presentation about a month ago. And for those not aware of what the RE Plus program is, it's the idea of having a zero-waste future. So being able to be one of the first cities, there were 24 out of 39 cities in King County that have signed the pledge. I believe we are number four out of all the cities. So I'm really proud of our work together as a council. And in the work that we're going to do together in the future, I think is really important in, in being able to bring our community alongside us so that we end up putting a lot less in the, into the landfill, Cedar Falls landfill. And so that's our challenge. Get rid of all that stuff and, and things like holiday lights, those things can be recycled rather than put into the garbage. So if you have any, come see me because I'm taking those right now.
Rizwald this year?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. So let's, let's maybe take a picture with it.
The whole council.
You know, it's for the whole council.
The whole council.
Finally, my hard work is being recognized.
Not the only one in my house who makes a sitting.
Are we in order? Room for these both.
We have some order at all.
There we go.
There we go.
I know we need to get close because otherwise you actually accept. Jim, you should be a pro.
Further this way.
Well, those together. Yes, we do.
All right. Right. This time we will provide time for residents for, to comment on items not the agenda. First, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to recognize and state your name and city of residence of the record. Direct your comments to council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of council, mayor or staff, or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. Public comments during this portion of the meeting shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may not result in your comments being suspended. Or may result in your comments being suspended. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all will be, due respect will be afforded to you. So with that, would anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda tonight? And if so, please raise your hand in city chambers and also online.
It feels somewhat anticlimactic to come after a police chief, a new police officer, three problem solvers. And how to get up here and maybe cause a little trouble. So my name is Brian Holloway. I'm the other Brian Holloway. I'm a resident of Snoqualmie and it's a pleasure to address the council today. I am here to put an emphatic no for the pool, for myself, my neighbors. And I feel a large fraction of the population and the citizenship of this city. The pool is not going to create a uniquely positive place to live in the City of Snoqualmie. Utilizing $15 million of existing funds to create the need to find, to use city bandwidth, resources and political capital to find another $12 million to construct a pool is not the best use of those resources available to the city today. In previous discussions at the Parks Committee and in the City Council, I believe there's been some discussion about focus groups and surveys. They have shown that the community has interest in a pool. However, three times, the question has actually been explicitly asked and answered via the ballot box. And every single time, the answer has been an emphatic no. This commit, community does not want to pay for a pool. It does not want this council to commit $7,000 per household to construct a pool and give each of those households, family of four assumption, the opportunity to spend $2,000 a year, as verified by the YMCA earlier this week, to get access to that pool. $2,000 a year per household in this community to access a pool that we paid for. And that is on assumptions that were presented at last, last week's committee meeting that strongly show the financial situation is tenuous at best. And the city could actually be responsible for carrying a subsidy, subsidizing the OpEx of that very same pool. I commend the city staff for doing a very comprehensive and professional job of analyzing the cost as well as the opportunity. I think the sensitivity analysis provided by the Y last week at the committee meeting clearly demonstrates the opportunity does not outweigh the cost. The cost is unsustainable and unaffordable. Please stop talking about a pool. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that have, like to have public comment? So please raise your hand.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ryan Seal. I'm one of the founding members of Segala Sellers. We moved our business out here to Snoqualmie in 2011 and opened our doors to the community in 2012. We then moved our tasting room to downtown corridor in 2014 and had approached the city with an expansion opportunity for the King Street Lot in 2017 and finalized the purchase in 2018. We worked diligently with the council to put forth a plan that was supported by the city and the community. And we continue that plan, continue to, to progress forward. We have had a few setbacks, one being COVID and we, our business was shut down and so we had to pause. And we were fully engaged with the city to try to break ground in 2023, but found further setbacks with the financial community as well as the cost of building going up by 45%. I know some of you, I don't know all of you. I hope to, to reengage with the city and the council to continue to work forward and progress our project. Thank you.
Anyone else in council chambers which make public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Anyone online which make public comment? So please raise your hand. I think it's. All right. Right, moving on then to the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains approval of the City Council Meeting Minutes dated November 13th, 2023. Approve the claims approval report. For a second, there it goes. Dated November 27th, 2023, AB 23-140 Resolution Adopting Snoqualmie Valley School District 2023 to 2028 Capital Facilities Plan. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move second.
Moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Councilor Benson.
No, wasn't second by me.
What? I'm only hearing the voices because they're wanting. Is there any public comment regarding any of the items that are on this consent agenda? If so, please let me your comments to two minutes. Please raise your hand. Not seen anyone in council chambers? And no one online? Right. Counsel, is there any discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, which passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. The first ordinance this evening is AB 23-123, the property tax levy ordinance. This is the second reading of ordinance 1281. Mayor Protim Halli, would you please read the summary and motion?
November 20, move to adopt ordinance 1281 levying regular property taxes for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2024 on all property, both real and personal in the City of Snoqualmie, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of providing sufficient revenue to the city for the ensuing year and providing for severability and an effective date. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protim Holloway and second by Councilor Johnson. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Please understand the comments must be related to this AB 23-123 and limit your comments to two minutes. And so please raise your hand. I've not seen anyone in City Hall or anyone online raising their hand. Counsel, is there any discussion? Would you like to hear from our budget manager if you have any questions? We did have a discussion last week or last customer on this as well. Mayor Protim Halli.
It was just a question of confirming it was a point eight something increase versus 1%. And that, that distinction was by the county. Did we ever get a clarification of why they don't like whole numbers?
That 1% is based on the highest lawful levy limit. And then after we get that limit, the actual limit adds refunds into it. And so our denominator increases, making that 1% shrink a little bit. And then we also calculate the increase from the actual limit minus the high, oh goodness, no, I need it in front of me. Okay, so we calculated it based on the highest lawful limit, which is the 1% that equals. When you subtract that total new number, so you've multiplied that by 1.1%, you subtract what our actual limit, what our actual levy was last year. And that, the numerator of that equation drops a little bit too, because our actual levy limit was a little bit higher than the total, the highest lawful levy limit. There we go. I said it all. So it's math, it's a math issue. You calculate the 1% off of one number and then you, the actual limit off of a different number. Does that make sense a little bit?
Good enough.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Seen then, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? It's unanimous and the ordinance is approved. Second ordinance size, AB 23-124, the Increase Ordinance, certifying an increase in property taxes. This is the second reading of ordinance 1282. Mayor Protim Halli, would you please read the summary and motion?
City school requires a regular levy in the amount of $8,702,496, which includes a 0.89% increase in the property tax revenue in the amount of $75,743, excuse me, for the previous year to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of City of Snoqualmie. It's being second reading, move to adopt ordinance number 1282, certifying an increase in the regular property tax levy of the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2024 on all property, both real and personal in the City of Snoqualmie, which is subject to taxation for the purposes of buying sufficient, or paying sufficient revenue to carry on the departments of the city for the ensuing year and providing for severability and an effective date. May I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Councilor, Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Not seen anyone in City Hall? Or anyone online raising their hands? Counsel, is there any discussion? Again, as I said, this was discussed during our last custom meeting as well as a special workshop. Okay, seen then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? And the ordinance 1282 is passed. Refer to him. Sorry, Counselor Mayhew.
Move to reorder Agenda Bill 23132 and take it up after Agenda Bill 23141.
Second.
This been moved by Counselor Mayhew and second by Counselor Benson to reorder. So this would be actually the next AB 23141 would be next, is that correct?
So we take up 136 next, then 141, then 132.
136. And then 132. Okay, 136, 141 and 132. Any discussion?
Imagine there's gonna be.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, so we will, it is approved, so we will go ahead and start with AB 3136. So ordinance adopting Snoqualmie Valley School District School Impact Fees for 2024. This is the first reading of ordinance 1283. Mayor Protim Halli, would you please read the summary?
All right, annual update to the school impact fee for 2024 on behalf of Snoqualmie Valley School District number 410. And I am not gonna read, this is for sure, so I'm not gonna breathe motion.
Right. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Okay, not seen anyone in City Hall or online raising their hand. Counsel, is there any discussion regarding this? Mayor Protim Holloway?
So we're aware in those who might be watching in, in lack of better things to do. We are the taxing, taxing authority, at least within the City of Snoqualmie, but this is a tax based on the capital facilities plan of the school district. So we're kind of a pass through on their behalf. But we have to approve on their behalf, the capital facilities plan and the appropriate taxation that goes along with it. And that's what this action is. We did the facilities plan up on the consent agenda. Unless there were issues with the math, we could have had discussions on it, but I didn't see any issues in the math and committee or anything else. So this is pretty well bookkeeping on behalf of the school district. So recommend we proceed forward at next reading.
Any other comments? Counselor Johnson?
Just a clarification then, then if we did not adopt this, let's just say that we all voted no. We don't want to do it for whatever reason, then what happens?
Counselor Mayhew.
School district, and this has happened before.
Yeah.
So the school district would be in a lot of trouble. They would not get those impact fees and they use those impact fees. They would not get those impact fees and they use those impact fees to fund their capital plans and a whole range of things that they do. So that would leave them short on their budget. So they, as as Mayor Porton was saying, they are responsible for developing their budget, developing their their tax request. And problem is they just don't have the ability to levy that tax. So they have to come ask us to do that on their behalf. So they're responsible for all of the work to create those budgets and then to execute those budgets. They just need us to actually impose that tax and collect it on their behalf.
Mayor Protim Holloway.
Attorney can correct me wrong. Their impact fees are already in a impact fee is already in place for new buildings. This is impact fee applied to new buildings at different rates, depending on what kind of building it is that support the school district. There are impact fees already in place. I believe the impact fees can just would continue at the previous rate until we revise it such as ordinance for this.
Yeah, you're correct, Councilmember Holloway. The the city has adopted impact fee. So unless that ordinance was repealed, you would still be able to collect them. But it would be hard to defend that number if the school's capital facilities plan suggests a different number is the right number to collect going forward. So you could still collect them, but they might be subject to challenge. Let's put it that way. So it's always good to update your ordinance to match the the school district's own math calculations. So that everybody's on the same page and you're not stuck defending a fee that doesn't match what the school district asked you to adopt. So.
We did have, just believe it or not.
Mayor Protim Holloway.
We did have disagreements in past with the teachers and garage to their math. And it did go for several, for an extended period of time. But in no way are there questions of the math at this time around. This is this looks good.
Counselor Benson.
Are we in some way responsible for the school district's math? Because if we're responsible for the way they're accounting for money, then I need to look at this a heck of a lot closer. Because you know, I is that is that a responsibility that we have?
City attorney.
So you have adopted an ordinance with a formula that says how the numbers are supposed to be calculated. So in effect, you've already told them how to calculate the numbers. They just have to apply the student generation rates that King County says are technically correct. And so it is sort of a formulaic exercise. They just have to figure out how many additional square feet they need and the other things that they're gonna spend the money on. So that's how they come up with their.
But we don't have to check their math.
No, no. I've never seen another jurisdiction check their math that way. So.
I don't know who that is. Council Mayhew.
If we check their math and find an error, can we retroactively improve our high school grade in math?
No.
Any other comments or discussion?
I don't know.
Budget manager.
I checked their math.
Right. So this is the first readings. The second reading will be during our next customer meeting in December. Any other comments?
I think someone has their hand raised.
Right, it is past public comment already. Next ordinance, fifth ordinance this evening is, I guess, the fourth, AB twenty-three dash one four-one, utility fiscal health and rate study adjustment. This is the first reading of the ordinance twelve eighty-four. Mayor Protim Holly, would you please read the summary?
Review and recommend action based on utility rate increase twenty twenty-four based on the twenty twenty-four fiscal health utility rates review by FCS group. This is a, so direction needed will be either hold the rate changes to existing utility rates or increase rate changes to recommend amounts as shown in ordinance twelve forty-eight. And this is first reading, so I won't make motion.
Okay, is there any public comment regarding this item? Please understand that public comments must be related to this particular agenda bill. Please let me your comments to two minutes. So please raise your hand. Okay, not see anyone in City Hall or online. Raising their hands. Okay, council, any discussion? Just had a very one-hour workshop or roundtable on this discussion. Counselor Mayhew.
Yeah, just two things quickly. I think that there may be a typo. I think it may be ordinance one-two-eight-four, not four-eight. Maybe someone could check that for us before next council meeting. And then the thing that we sent forward from FNA on this is because this is an ordinance, we go through two readings. So in order for us to have a discussion around what we want to do, we brought forward the first reading tonight. And in this agenda bill is the I I think in the presentation we had, there was, I think our consultant referred to a conservative number and a
Optimistic.
Optimistic number. So what is in this ordinance right now is the conservative number. So the, as you heard in some of the conversation we got to in the roundtable, there's some question, we we can defeat this and just leave rates as they are. So that would be just, you know, ending up not adopting this ordinance. We can adopt it as written, which would be the conservative number, but we can also change those numbers to different numbers. Any number that, you know, we might like to. So I just want to make sure that that's clear that we can take this ordinance, which is written with the numbers at the conservative end, and we can change those if we thought we should. And as you all heard, Councilmember Holloway suggested that we at least consider that. You heard his pitch on that. You heard my pitch on that. But I just want to make sure you understood how the mechanics were on this.
Counselor Washington.
Councilmember Mayhew, I just want to confirmation. So when you said the more conservative number, is that the option one?
It's about possible to have slide fourteen put up.
Thank you. Just so that we all know what we're looking at. Thank you.
Let me catch up. Gonna be blurry for a second. Is this really the core?
Correct. So with the more conservative option, that would be the option one. And the more optimistic option will be option two.
The the optimistic option as soon as revenue.
Well, optimist, I'll leave it alone.
Okay. Counselor Benson.
From the description of how the conservative numbers were arrived at, those sound realistic. From from the descriptions that that you guys are talking about, obviously, Salish is not gonna happen. And I'm not sure when Millsite's gonna get started. So the the conservative numbers seemed realistic to me. So unless there's a compelling argument, I it doesn't seem like a number we should necessarily fiddle with. Plus, if it's if if we're if we're conservative, we'll be erring on the on the side of being able to pay for this stuff. And I don't like the the option of borrowing money to do this.
Mayor Protim Holloway.
So two things again, if like the site is large, it's not going to happen. Those things in the CIP associated with that would be stretched out. Okay, you'll see that impact in the rate study of more detail. Okay, as we have to adjust the CIP for expected growth. My issue is I don't want to knee jerk this without that rate study. I'll go somewhere in the middle is where I'm caught is where I'm chest and being comfortable with, but I don't want to push the pedal all the way done, just on my teenage daughter going, ah. I'd rather have my wife look at the map and tell me this is what you need to do. Okay? That's my only argument is I I'm really just hedging my bet on that full born rate study where we get those other assumptions and considerations in. Keep in mind, this is one year. The other option, I mean, we're not in one year time will not put us into a borrowing condition. Okay, it may eat into our reserves if things go the other way. More than more than we think. But also leaving it at the at the lower rates. There's there's an inflate inflation assumption that's in there that drove those rates. Which I don't think anybody can argue that that assumption is not is valid. The the rates are going to go up. I just want to do the full math to determine how far up. And in the meantime, instead of having a big jump in twenty twenty-four, we do a half step in twenty twenty-three. So it's not so impactful just all at once. And we know it's gonna go up. Let's go up a little bit. Let's see what the real number is as part of the rate study and act at twenty twenty-four. So I really suggest and I'm gonna go slightly north of average is with many things. That we go that water, we do a five percent. And that in storm water, we do six point five.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Being on the conservative side for me is keeping the rates where they're at for one year. I I'm incredibly sensitive to the impact inflation's had on families, on businesses. And I would agree with with Councilmember Mayor Protim Holloway that sewer is probably where we need to focus on this year and that that's the one place that I say, okay, let's let's go from two percent to a three percent increase, but keep everything else where they're at. And then once the rate study is done, we can reassess it rather than and and again, I I believe you had the right words for it. The knee jerk reaction is just raising it. I I think that we need to hold where we're at now in the projected increases. But hold where we're at. So I I would not go to the larger increases on water and storm water.
Counselor Mayhew.
So I think look, we're we're we have run the city for decades, we many of our predecessors for two decades, very responsibly. We have those reserves because we've run it responsibly. Taking something and wiping out our reserves, digging into reserves in our utility system. Just so that we gain favor with a few voters and then we whack them another another year from now really hard. I don't think that's gonna work out. I don't think that's what they want us to do. I don't think that's why they voted for us. I think they want us to continue the same kind of responsible policies and responsible reserves that we've had. The thing that's most frustrating to me is when we passed the budget a year ago. We talked about rate study. I talked about this in particular with the whole council because I was very concerned about us adding those additional positions to the utility system. And we budgeted in the budget, the money for the rate study. And we were promised the rate study would happen this year. That didn't happen. Now we're in a position that we're shooting a little bit blind. I don't think that's a justification. We all know full darn well that the that inflation is higher than what was in that rate study. If we just say, ah, we're just gonna ignore that and dig it in, dig into reserves. Come on, guys, that's that's not a way to run a a utility system. It's certainly not the way we've run it before. So I appreciate my fellow council members struggling with what is the right percentage. We don't know. I get that. But I think to say that we're not gonna react at all is just I think we're fooling ourselves and I I think we're gonna hurt the budget. The one last thing I'd say is this rate study was different than the one prior because of its assumption over the horizon of borrowing. That wasn't in the prior rate study. I was very concerned about that when we did the rate study, but it was enough years out that I thought, well, let's see how we go. I agreed with the assumptions that went in it, but my thought was, and I believe there are other council members on the council at a similar thought of as the next few years go by, let's see about that. Maybe these construction projects can happen a little later. So when we talk about pushing things out, honestly, I was always thinking we'd do that anyway. Because I would always have been planning to try and avoid that borrowing. But if we double up on things that we have to push out for, we're just we're just gonna run out of, we're not gonna be able to push things out. And we're, so I think we don't move on this now, we bring sooner the need to borrow. And I think that's a mistake. So I think what's proposed here seems very reasonable. I don't think our residents will be shocked by this. In fact, frankly, other cities around us are going up by much more than this. So I think it's a responsible thing to do. I appreciate the concerns behind everyone's comments. I don't think anyone's making crazy comments, but I think we have to be responsible here. So I'm in favor of doing the percentages that are up there in in the so-called conservative. But if we don't do those percentage, I'd like to see us get as close to those percentages as as we're comfortable with.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I also very much appreciate the other council members' concerns. Everyone's bringing up some really good points, I think. As I'm looking at the the numbers on page one fifty-five in the packet, I don't know how else better to describe it. But it's the the residential rates, multifamily, and then also the the commercial as well. As I look at those numbers, do I truly believe that when the rate study comes back, that the numbers are going to be less than that? If I thought that the numbers would be less than that when the rate study is done, if I thought there's a decent shot at that, then I would be fine with lowering these rates from what's been proposed here. But if I had to guess, I bet that the numbers are gonna look a lot worse than that. And I think that just giving us this step along the way will will help observe some of the shock for our residents. And for that reason, I'm I'm fine with these. The only one that makes me a little bit grumpy is on the multifamily rate that the intent there was for that number to continue going down. And I do see it bumps up to twenty twenty-four. So if there's an an exact number that that I want to put there in its place, I'm not gonna make a motion on it. If if other council members feel feel similarly, then then I'll follow their lead on that. But otherwise, I'm happy with this agenda bill as it is.
Your present Holloway.
So just for clarification, what you have before you is not a proposal to rejigger the rates between the multifamily residential commercial. It's in in sewer, it's three percent across the board. Okay, so the the decomposition of that rate into those different classes is is not what was proposed to be discussed. That that really does take a little more math than what was done leading up to this discussion. And that's a rate study. So we'll do that in twenty twenty-four and try to re-figure those allocations.
Counselor Christensen.
Yeah, um, I I share the opinion of Councilmembers Johnson and Mayhew as well. I don't want to reach the end of this and find ourselves in a bigger hole and then what we'll be in in terms of trying to figure out the funding for going forward. And I don't think that that holding to where we are right now, based on the information that we have is the appropriate step. So I I would be in favor of going with rates or if council wants to to lower them slightly, but I I do think that we need to move now because we know that those changes are coming, that they're going to be quite expensive.
Counselor Washington, do you have a?
Yeah, I just kind of was doing some of the math in this and kind of going between the optimistic option and the conservative option. And if you kind of look at the conservative or the the conservative option and you add those up, it's it's a, it's an increase. It's a fifty-one percent change. And
Fifteen.
Fourteen.
You have to look at the size of the bills.
Counselor Benson.
Oh, sorry.
The one that has the bills.
It has the.
That guy.
It's delayed.
So while I don't want to see that increase, I do think that I I share this, the opinion of my other council members that we do have to move now or else. We do have to move now or else. Go into. Dead option, so. Yeah. I'll leave it there for you.
Pastor Mayhew.
Yeah, so just just to kinda help with the numbers. So as it stands, we would move to the three point oh seven, a three point oh seven percent. Increase. That's the take no action. Option. Or I think we, what do we refer to it as the?
Optimistic.
Optimistic. The conservative is a four point seven four percent increase. So that's. You know, that's what we're talking about. Um, that just wanna make sure everyone kind of sees that. And then uh, just point of information that just because so these, if if we do this, we're talking about changing the rates in twenty four. And then we'd have, we do the rate study during twenty four, see what we need to do for twenty five and beyond. Okay? I just a point of information, when does the? Um. Current. Uh. I'm gonna find the right word. I'm not gonna find the right word, garbage contract. Um, uh, and so could because we all know that those rates are gonna go up substantially. When we uh, have to renew, you know, uh, enter into a new contract. What year will that take effect?
City Administrator Chamus.
We're in our last renewal, so I believe it's the the end of next year. So the contract's been awarded with the consultant to be in that negotiation process.
So just make sure I'm hearing that right. We would expect the garbage rates to go up and probably fairly substantially. In at the end of twenty four or beginning of twenty five or when.
Twenty five.
Beginning of twenty five. So just keep that in mind as well. To the extent we. You know, push off twenty four to give people, you know. Uh, to the extent we then make up for it in twenty five with a big increase. They're also getting whacked with a big increase on garbage, just. You know, it's just um, you're concentrating a lot of things in um. What some people might point out to you as an election year.
Pastor Benson.
Yeah, so. So we're talking about. An added increase of a little less than three bucks a month on the average household or about thirty five bucks over the course of the year. Which. Um, I mean, I don't wanna scoff at thirty five bucks. I save thirty five bucks whenever I can, but. It's not a savings if we end up having to borrow later on. Borrowed dollars are more expensive dollars. And um, I don't think we're doing anybody any favors by. By pushing us, by kicking the can. Down the road and getting closer to the option where we are gonna have to borrow money in order to make these improvements. So um. For me, the the conservative numbers are, I mean, this is an important thing. We we wanna be able to, I mean, I love I love clean water. I'm a huge fan. So um. I. I think it's worth it. I think I think I see it as a public safety thing.
Pastor Washington.
Yeah, and sorry, I just wanna make sure that the four point seven four percent, four point seven four percent, that's the two thousand twenty four modified. That's an average of the conservative option. Is that? That's considering. All of the option twos. Okay.
Repro Tim Hallway.
Can you go back to that other chart? So help me with math here, cuz in the option two. Uh, storm went by three percent and that represents about one sixth of the overall bill. Uh, water went up by six percent. And that represents roughly three six. And then sewer went up by seven and a quarter percent, and that's roughly about. Two six. So I don't know how to take those averages. Of percentages. And then only increased by four point seven five? So five, five, six of the bill is going up by a percentage higher, significantly higher than what you're showing as the average there. So I'm. Huh? Maybe I'm not understanding the chart.
Eighty four.
City Administrator Chamus.
Sir, Serge, our consultant is online. If you wanna jump in, Serge.
Yeah, one second. I I'm gonna pull up that table and take a quick look. So my preliminary look is that.
Yeah.
This the sewer utility share. Which is about currently. Fifty forty eight percent of the total bill is going up three percent. So that three percent because it's fifty percent Wayne is weighing down the remaining portions of the bill. Yeah, that's pretty much the so currently. Under the current scenario, the water utility represents. Thirty five percent of total, so thirty five percent. I'm just doing math as we talk.
So.
So thirty five percent of six percent is about two percent equivalent. And then uh, kinda going down the line, sewers, three percent. And storm water is seven. So it's a weighted average of a combined increase.
I might be able to help. Okay, let's see. I might be able to help. Try to re-say what he said. Could you take us to slide fourteen? Sorry, I I'll stop there. So can everyone agree if we go to the far right sewer? Eighty four sixty is give or take roughly half the one seventy seven. Everyone buy that? Give or take roughly half. So we're just, we're gonna do approximation, right? So if half of it is sewer, let's go back one slide. Sewer is going up three percent. So half of the whole thing is only going up three percent. So with that in mind, yeah, the other two are going up more than that, but maybe that sort of makes sense intuitively that, okay, your weighted guy ended up at four point seven. Does that perhaps help? So let's go to fifteen again. See if they, if half of it went up. Three percent, then the other two, which collectively are half. You know, move it up to four, seven on average, but um, just sort of a, just sort of a. Approximation, it kinda makes sense, right?
But if I take that other half, it's just now at six and seven percent.
So six and three divide by two is. I've never been good in numbers. Six and three.
Uh, I'm on.
Four and a half. Which is really close to four point seven four percent. It's. Right, cause half of it's at six percent, say, half's at three.
I think yes.
Okay, any other comments or?
Well, you wanna just leave it, it's fine. I can explain. I think part of what's going on is this is simplifying the rates that there's different classes and the different classes had different percentage change. Uh, in twenty four and then into twenty five, as we talked about earlier, some of them were uh, shrinking like multifamily and uh, sewer has some kind of wild changes in there with regards to like how. Uh, I think it's called irrigation in this, but class A has different percentage rates. And so once all the changes have been made to go flat. To uh, three percent rather than two, it's actually a variety of different uh. Variables that are changing there. So that might lead to the difficulty of the fast math rather than the Excel chart that uh, we use to tally this from the previous uh, utility rate study.
Okay, any other questions? Again, we'll be, there'll be a second reading during our next council meeting.
Well.
Is that a question? Repro Tim Hallway.
I'm gonna make a motion. Can you bring it up?
Yeah.
Can you vote on the ordinance yet?
Um, make, go up again.
Go up.
Fourteen. I wanna make sure I'm making the right motion. Nope, go back in fourteen. Money. Money slide. Uh, move to revise the agenda bill into consideration to have a stormwater increase of three percent. A water increase of five percent and a stormwater increase of six point five percent.
But please say that.
Oh, sure. You gonna do that to me again?
No, I think.
No, so go with sewer as presented, three percent. Water at uh, five percent. And stormwater at six point five percent. Oh, if I didn't say that's what I meant to say. Yeah. Just so we have a number we can work with next time.
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Can you put that up there? For sure. Okay, so it's moved by Repertum Holloway, second by Council Rotten, and the motion is.
Revised the agenda bill to have sewer at three percent, water at five percent, and stormwater at six point five percent.
Yep. Thank you.
There.
City Attorney Linehan.
Uh, may I ask clarification? Do you want? When the agenda bill comes back to that, for that to be a first reading of the revised agenda bill or a second reading?
It'd be. Revised percentages if approved out of this discussion.
Pastor Benson.
Yeah, when we vote on this, can we do it as a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding this motion? See, and then. Okay, Councilperson, how was you, how was your vote?
No.
Councilwoman.
Hi.
Repertum Hallway.
Hi.
Customer Mayhew.
No.
Pastor Washington.
I.
Pastor Christensen.
No.
Pastor Johnson.
No.
Okay, so the motion did not pass. Um, four votes to nay, three boat, three votes approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Again, at the. So you have a public hearing. And also further discussion of this ordinance or second reading during our next council meeting in December. Councilor Mayhew.
I just quick uh, information for the council. Um, we did a staff trying to support us, did originally schedule, initially scheduled the public hearing for tonight. But at F and A, we thought, you know, better for all of us to have had a chance to talk about this and kinda get familiar with it. Before we were hearing public comment. So that's why the public comment was moved to next council at the second reading. Um, cuz I I know generally we like to hear from residents, but if you just look at the. The schedule, we we had to get a first reading. We're gonna run out of time to have this done by year end. So that's the reasoning for the sort of odd. Timing, but we'll still have a chance to hear from residents before we make our decision.
All right. Right, seeing more just no more discussion, we will move on. To the next ordinance is AB twenty three dash one three two, the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four mid biennial budget amendment. This is the second reading, reading of ordinance twelve seventy eight. Repro Tim Hallway, would you please read the summary and motion?
Purpose of this ordinance is to amend the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget to provide the city with the appropriate nest. Appropriation necessary to cover multiple amendment requests, including citywide insurance premiums, replacement of the police department's gun range, backstop material. And several CIP projects, IT system repair, and the ERP system project. Let's see, uh. Okay, this is a bit. No, this is wrong. Huh?
It's wrong.
That's wrong. Move to approve ordinance one, two, seven, eight, amending the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget. Uh, and to set. An adoption of ordinance one, two, seven, eight for the November twenty seventh, which is tonight, city council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda bill and the ordinance as presented? May I have a second?
Okay.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Council Washington. Three discussion on this. This is the second reading. We discussed this during a roundtable last, during the last council meeting as well.
Point of order.
Yes.
Uh, do we take any public comment on this?
Yes, actually we do. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Yes, so please raise your hand in council chambers as well as online. Okay, not seeing any. Any discussion? Councilor Mayhew.
A point of information, um, a city attorney could help. So. I'm in favor of all of the budget amendments that are proposed. What I'm trying to clarify is. Are we just voting for those budget amendments? Or are we? Adopting. This whole. In a, you know, this whole um. Appropriation. In other words, are we merely adopting adjustments to the existing biennial appropriation, or are we re-adopting a revised entire? Biennial appropriation. That question makes sense?
I guess I'm curious what you think the distinction between those two options is because it's not clear to me what the distinction is.
Yeah, so. Um. The there are individual expenditure. Drawing blanks on words tonight. Um, appropriations, appropriations. So there are individual appropriations. There's, I'm gonna say half a dozen of them or so. I agree with each one of those. However, I've now become concerned about the entire, the appropriation in total. Because I don't think the revenues are coming in, and I think the cost will be much higher than what's in this appropriation. Or sorry, in, yeah, in the current appropriation. So I'm unwilling to vote for this entire appropriation because I think we have no idea how to fund it. And I think that these numbers are flat out wrong. We all know. Pretty well how those. Negotiations with unions are coming in. We know these numbers aren't gonna cover it. So I'm unwilling to vote for something I know. Is not an adequate budget. But I'm very willing to vote for the specific. Uh, budget amendments that are being proposed. Does that make sense now?
Yes, and I think I would just refer back to the statutory language that governs the mid by review and and revision or modification, and it it talks about modifying the budget. So I think you're looking at a holistic revision of the budget, but it's of course broken down into. Its individual components. So. Unless you have different components that result, you know, that also amend the budget that you would prefer to. Adopt or approve. I think you're approving that, an amendment to the overall budget.
So just to follow up then, I understood that answer. Um. Is there a timeframe in which we must? Uh, uh. Either adopt or we lose the chance to do a mid biennial review. In other words. Could we wait until January sometime to do a mid biennial review or kinda what are the deadlines around that mid biennial review?
You're allowed to do it between the eighth month and the twelfth month. So if you don't do it, but you have to do it. You're required to do it by the end of the first year of the of the two year budget. So you got December thirty first is your deadline.
Got it. So then last question in this series then is just. If we don't adopt this. But we do adopt certain budget amendments. Which I know that's separate, therefore requires a super majority, but if we did that. That's a path that could happen. This would just stay in place. We'd have those budget amendments, and then if we needed to change something later, we'd have to take that up then. Is that right?
Well, any any amendment that results in a reduction, revocation, or recall, I think is the language of any. Fund of any single fund is gonna require a super majority.
What about increases? Cuz I think we're gonna have.
If you have more money to appropriate. Um, that doesn't require a super majority. If you're just appropriating new spending, new funds for that new spending. No, but if you're subtracting anything from any previously approved fund, then that's a super majority requirement.
Got it. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have that. Uh, it would be really nice to have that problem. Okay, thank you for the answers.
Mayor Pro Tim Hallway.
So but. The contract negotiations are ongoing. They have haven't been finalized. They don't exist at this moment. Okay, so incorporating them into this. Near impossible and more, it's inappropriate. Once we have, we know what those are, then yes, we're gonna have to probably do another amendment. To adjust for the contracts as agreed to. And yes, it's gonna be worse than this, but I I don't know how you. Without making the assumption, which I think also would be inappropriate, considering we're in middle of negotiations. Of what that is, that there's no way to incorporate. It doesn't exist. It's inappropriate to do it.
So yes, you're just voting on those amendments that you see listed, those adjustments you see listed out and their impact on the budget. When other things happen, we were gonna have to do this again for those other things, including the contracts.
Council Walton?
Yeah, um, I appreciate Councilmember May Hughes concern. But we also have to remember, we adopted a biannual budget with certain projections, and we were all well aware of, you know, the the pitfalls. And part of the reason why we set reserves aside to make sure that we had adequate coverage, knowing that we may not be in an optimal situation. But it's already been adopted. And to to change mid course after mid course would be dangerous for the city to to be in those waters.
Councilman.
Yes, I appreciate the comments, but I very much disagree that it was would be either dangerous. In fact, I think it would be dangerous not to adopt a change because we know it's false. Putting our head in the sand and saying we're gonna get so. And I also don't think it's inappropriate. This budget, this budget that we adopted has assumptions on employee raises in it. It didn't assume no one got a raise. It assumed a specific percentage increase for each of the employees. We now know those percentages aren't going to happen. They're going to be higher. Now, I think Councilman Walton's comment about the that we were aware of that when we adopted the budget and we made certain provisions in that regard is absolutely right. My concern is I haven't seen an update on that, and I went back and looked at the numbers. And our provision is not adequate for what we're facing. And I've been talking about this, as you all know, at many council meetings. There's no way we're getting through this without going back to the voters is my view, unless we're willing to do severe service cuts. And what I can't understand is why we haven't had that discussion yet. Months go by, weeks go by, we're not dealing with this. And if we don't start dealing with this, we're not getting this on to uh, of a ballot for the voters on a timely basis. And we haven't started engaging with the community about what our finances really look like. And so I just think that I I will just say, and then this is all I have to say on this, I will not vote for this mid biennial budget because of those reasons. We have to take this seriously. We must increase in my view the appropriation to pay for what we know is going to be our employee costs unless we're willing to take on now and say we're cutting services by an amount sufficient to deal with that. We haven't had that conversation. Since we're not doing that, I think it's I can't vote for this in good conscience. Now, to be clear, I completely agree with the specific budget amendments that were proposed. And if I was able to vote for those outside of having to approve the entire budget, I would absolutely vote for those.
Council Johnson.
I'm curious how hard it would be to figure out some ballpark plus or minus five percent on how much the increased cost would be for the employees with new negotiations. And work that into a new version of this. And can we get that done by our next council meeting? Have definitely take a look at it.
One second. City Administrator Chambliss.
So I need to be careful about the words I choose on this one.
Yeah, we all have to be on that.
So there we we have a tentative agreement with the labor union. And there is a vote scheduled. Beyond that, I don't think we can discuss anything beyond that. So until that vote is concluded, I cannot bring it forward to council.
Council Johnson.
Oh, then based on that, then I think that we're stuck. We are short funds. We know that. And there are budget amendments here that are proposed to fill that gap. And we just all know that there are other things that are deficient. If there is not a way to fix the problems that Councilmember May has brought up that I completely agree with, then I feel like I I'm left with, okay, well, we have this. And I I am very much open to ideas for how to fix that problem. But if there isn't a fix, then I feel like this is what we're stuck with. And yeah, then that's what I feel that I'm obligated to go with.
Evening. Council Benson.
That's not an option. I mean, that's that's not a that's not that's not actual options. If we know that the numbers that we have are bogus. And and there's there's some sort of obstacle to getting the proper numbers in, even though we we have knowledge as to what the proper numbers would be or close to it. Um, the option to just go with bad numbers does not feel like we're doing service to the city properly. So I'm, I I think somebody more creative than I needs to come up with a better plan than that.
Second.
Customer or Mayor Tim Holloway?
So the whole, I agree with you more form of point. I actually think the lines cross this year, not two years from now. But until the contract is official and we know what those numbers really are, I can't do a budget amendment against it. Now, to your point, no, there, once we really have a solid issue and the contract is in place, we cannot walk away without a fix. That is our one sole responsibility as citizens is this budget ultimately, okay? But until again, I can't because they could do math. I I couldn't put that number in here, put it in reserve. Well, they could do the math and figure out what we thought it was. And oh, yeah, they're okay with whatever is the current proposal, and maybe they would have gone for a percent more if they get the math wrong. I don't want to go into that discussion. I have solid changes that we can quantify that we are adopting with this. We're not done. We're gonna have to do this again. Once those contracts come in, and we will have to find a solution at that stage. But that's not now. That's when those contracts come in.
Council Johnson.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at is that I don't know how to make this better than what it is right now. If I had a way to make it better, then that's what I would do. And if someone does have an idea, I am all ears for how to improve this. But it seems to me that we have to make a fix, and this is what's on the table. Uh, that said, to Councilmember May Hughes' other point, uh, if we don't go to the voters for some more funds, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be slashing a whole lot of stuff and things that are gonna make that will be the fix. Yes, and we have to fix things eventually. Anyway, it's just it's math. Yeah, if we cannot convince the voters to give us not us, obviously, but the city enough funds to perform the duties of the city, then yeah, we're gonna be cutting a whole lot of stuff, and the numbers will balance. And I think people will will get grumpy. So we need to do our job and convince the voters that, yeah, the city really does need this money. We've had the one percent tax increase limit for property taxes for a long time, and that ain't enough. It doesn't catch up with inflation. In fact, it is inflation or one percent, whichever is lower. And as we found, it's not even necessarily one percent. Sometimes it's less than that. So just in summary, I think that this is the best thing that's on the table for me sitting here tonight. And and if someone has a way to make it better, I am all ears.
Before you've already spoken several times, I'm curious about Councilor Christensen or Council Washington. Did you want to?
Point of order. So council member wishing to speak, rules of procedure require you to call on that council member for calling on someone who's not.
Point, point of order. The chair has the prerogative to call on the other council members who have not had an opportunity to speak.
I raised a point of order.
For before allowing.
Can I have a, I had the floor. He does not have the floor. I've raised a point of order. Can I have a ruling?
So Robert's rules is everyone might be allowed to speak at least once before someone has a chance to speak a second time on a motion. So I'm just doing round robin.
Can we check with the city attorney? Because that's not a true statement. City attorney will not back you up on that. That is not Robert's rules.
I'm not the parliamentarian, and that's why I'm going to defer to the mayor.
Appeal to the full council.
Second. Third.
Okay. So you want to vote on it?
State what we're voting on, please.
To follow Robert's rules and allow others to speak before someone else shall have their second chance or third or fourth on a motion.
So no, there's disagreement on Robert's rules. So you need to state it without Robert's rules or there.
Then no one can speak a second time unless all those that want to speak first on motion has a chance. The all in favor of following that rule, CI?
I.
I'm still confused. So if I say yes, am I saying you should recognize Mayhew? Or if I'm saying no, am I saying you should recognize me here?
I'm saying let's give everyone else a chance to see any those do round robin. And those that haven't had a chance to speak, if they wish to, they can. If they don't, then we go back to Mayhew.
So you're proposing it as a round robin, as round robin as directed by chair versus recognition by him. Okay. I just I need a clarification on what that is.
I'm saying if there's others we have not heard from, let's hear from them before it goes back to the same person again who's held the floor most of the time this evening.
Point of order. Mayor.
Yes.
And that is Robert's rules of order includes having the opportunity of every member to speak once before others having a second time to speak on the motion.
Well, point of order, it can't be instituted arbitrarily in in order to shut up one councilman. If the if the if they, if the mayor wants us to have a round robin, great, the mayor can propose a round robin, but it can't be because because the mayor has decided that somebody is talking too much. There was one hand up. I want to hear what he has to say.
Actually, you're just trying to give everyone an equal voice. So Council Washington and Christensen, did you have any comments? Otherwise, we'll go back to Council Mayhew.
No, we're in the middle of the vote. No. Let's have the vote.
So following the rule, members are reminded that no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to speak do so has spoken once. All in favor of that rule? I.
I.
Those opposed, name?
Name.
All right. So the council. Council Mayhew.
So I have heard your debate. I understand the points that each of you are making. I would just implore you. If we decide to adopt this, and I understand the points that each of you made, please, I've been saying this now for a couple of months. We must solve this problem. Let's either begin work on going to the the public, the voters for a levy lid lift, or let's get to work on cutting services. Which means cutting heads. Solve it one way or the other. Let's decide as a council which way we want to solve it. And let's get to work. The clock is ticking. We're just one month away from when these expenditures of twenty twenty-four are happening. We're out of time. So I just, I understand your points. I understand why you may feel, you know, the way you're gonna vote, but please, I implore you, I don't see any of you saying you don't that you don't think we have a problem. Please, I implore you, we've got to get to work on this problem. That's all I got to say.
So Washington.
So I just, I have a question. What happens tonight if we can't adopt the mid biennial budget amendment? What happens?
Your adopted budget will remain as it was adopted in December of twenty twenty-two.
Projects, though, that are in that budget.
Sorry.
What happens to the projects that are in that budget?
Well, you you may have a budget that's inconsistent with what you're actually doing. So that's.
Council Benson.
Or we add the post-Christmas meeting that we cut before, which I implore us to do.
Because he is failure.
Council Christensen.
Um, so at the time that we adopted the budget initially, obviously, we didn't have the initial information that we have now. It's my position that we need to, excuse me, turn that up so I wouldn't whack myself in the face with it. Um, since the time that we adopted the budget previously, we have a bunch of additional information and costs and expenditures and additional things that we need to go ahead and incorporate in the document that we have so that is the best representation of the figures that we have at this point. I realized that there's a lot of work to do. And that we're going to have to come up with additional funding sources. And that we will need to move on that quickly in the new year, but this is the best that we have now. I don't think that we should leave what is previously in place in place because I this is a more accurate representation. It's better than what we have. And so I do think that we need to push this forward. I wanted to make sure that I had listened to all my fellow council members before speaking. I do appreciate the mayor giving the opportunity to do that. But I wanted to sort out my feelings and again, listen to my fellow council members to see which arguments resonated with me. And again, I in favor of going forward with this because it is the best that we have at this time. And if you want to meet on December twenty-sixth, you know, I will come. So.
All right, all right, you and me.
Any other comments regarding the mid biennial budget? Council Johnson.
Yeah, one more thing toward going to the voters is if I I guess I would wonder what proportion of the people would vote on that issue. Perhaps as little as, I'm not sure exactly what the timing is on that exactly, but you know, what, within the next year or so, something like that. Are even aware that we have a problem. Because past councils have done a very good job of making sure that the city was run really well. And it is still run extremely well to this day, apart from maybe a few issues with the snow last year, but we need to convince them that these are real problems and that there are going to be some very serious consequences if if they choose not to fully fund the services that we all know that they want. So we have work to do, and we got to be serious about it. And as Councilmember May Hughes said, we got to do it now. We need to be aware before they start filling out ballots.
Point of order.
That's right.
We need to make sure that the conversation we have is germane to the budget amendments to correct these items that have been presented and not get ahead of ourselves on other topics that will need to be addressed. But the matter at hand is the budget amendments that we need to consider.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Maybe twenty-three dash one, three, two. And then all those in favor, CI?
I.
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 Any opposed name?
Name.
All right. So the eyes have it and one opposed by Council Mayhew. Moving on to committee reports is your reports from Public Safety Committee.
Uh, yeah, in public safety, we met and discussed the ladder truck. We received the updated information that the police department is fully staffed, which is fantastic. The last position was filled. Um, and then after that, we had a special meeting to go over the strategic plan. Had some great discussion for a couple of hours and anticipate seeing draft with the updates come back shortly. Yes, excuse me, Fire Department strategic plan. Great, thank you. This is AB twenty-three dash one, three, seven, annual floodplain management repetitive loss plan. Community Director Community Development Director Emily Artetia is going to give us an update on that.
Good evening, council members. Emily Artetia, Community Development Director. This agenda bill that you have, AB 23-137, is an annual budget, I mean, excuse me, an annual agenda bill that you probably recall from seeing last year. Every year, the city goes through its annual recertification of its community rating system. And I think the most important thing here is just to note that on November 6, 2023, we completed that process again. And we're obligated to share this information with you as part of the community rating system. So we do tell FEMA that we will speak to you and we do come and speak to you and this agenda bill does demonstrate that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but hopefully just keep this simple and straightforward.
Councilor Mayhew?
Just so full councils aware, and I don't know if Chair wants to make any comment, but this, we did go over this in a little more depth in Community Development Committee and our conclusion was exactly what Director Artetia said. I don't know if you have any other comments, but that, you know, this is very consistent and we're very pleased with the progress being made.
No, no further to comment.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Director. Is there any further comment from our report from Community Development Committee?
Just to put on the council member, council's horizon that the, excuse me, CDC has gone through several elements of the comprehensive plan update and that the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Commission have done a fantastic job going through those elements we've looked at. And prior to adoption of the entire comprehensive plan later on next year, we're going to give the council the opportunity to take a look at each of those elements as well, probably January-ish.
Great, thank you.
No further report.
Parks and Public Works Committee, we have our interim Parks and Public Works Director Jeff Hamlin is here to do a presentation on the community center. And maybe you can introduce who is also here if there's any questions.
Evening, council. Jeff Hamlin, I'm a city engineer and interim director for Parks and Public Works. I also have with me tonight a few folks. Plain Wolf from Abshire Construction, who is basically our team leader for the design build team. Wiser, sorry, Wiser from Parametrics and Josh Sutton, of course, from YMCA. And I believe we have somebody from ALSC on the phone as well in case so we have anything that needs to be presented there. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. All right. So last time I was here, you had asked that I share a little bit more information about how we got from the community input side all the way to a building design. And that is essentially programming in a nutshell. And last time I kind of glossed over it because, you know, for trying to be conscious of time, I wanted to, well, I just didn't want to share all that information because it's a lot. Programming is an extremely important aspect of building design. But I'm going to unpack that for you a little bit. And I'm going to do it as quickly as possible because I have a lot of slides and I think that you guys will have a pretty good understanding of what we're talking about. Once I finish, I'm going to start off with the project timeline. As you can see, if we keep going like this, I'm going to have to add another slide here.
Smaller type.
So our process in a nutshell, quickly, we have, we started with our community input portion of it. That is, I'm going to, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Then we had design build team selection. So when you do the design build process, you put the, the design build team, the engineer, the architect and the contractor together and you put them up front because they help you develop your design as a team. And so that happened second and that started in February and went clear through June. Programming efforts started right after that and that we, as an amazingly abbreviated process, we did that in two months. From there, we went to schematic design. And that brings us to where we're at right now and a very impending decision that needs to be made. Moving forward from this, we will develop the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP. It's an important topic that we'll talk a little bit more about later. Following GMP, there's the permitting process. There is a time constraint approaching very soon that we'll need to discuss. Following permitting or at least the permit applications, we immediately, well, we'll, it'll be, it'll happen at the same time. We'll be working on construction drawings and then hopefully to construction and our schedule has us starting that in June. So starting with the community input portion of it, the survey was conducted. I think many of you remember this. It was, the results of this are posted on the website. By the way, if anybody wants to see it, you can look it up. It was conducted by EMC Research back in July, July 15th through the 29th of 2019. A sample was drawn from registered voters in Snoqualmie. These were live telephone interviews, 300 interviews in all. And the results showed broad support of the community center expansion project, approximately 72% were in favor, 25 against. And that included with the knowledge of how we proposed to fund it. Following that, we had the community center advisory committee. The advisory committee included multiple partners. We had public partners, the Snoqualmie Valley School District, for instance, private partnerships. I think the tribe was involved. Community service partners, the YMCA in particular, and then, you know, local residents and neighbors. Three sessions were held, first one back in 2019 and then two this year. So session one. That was again, the first sessions, approximately 80 people were in attendance. And the idea was to gather broad input and recommendations. Momentum faltered, of course, during the pandemic. So the thing has kind of sat dormant. But the input and the recommendations from this community town hall served as the foundation of this recent 2023 community input sessions.
So. Excuse me for one second. So Councilor Mayhew, you had a question?
Just a quick question. Could you go back three slides, I think?
Okay.
Sorry about that. I didn't want you to get too far. Yeah. The community survey that you did, which option did you present to them that they gave that 72% and 25%?
So there was two. They asked, is there general favor? And this is, I'm drawing this from memory, from reading it, but it was, do you generally favor, you know, a community, it's, it's council member hallways? Statement, do you want cake? Yes, we'd like cake, you know, you want to pay for the cake, right? So the question was asked again, this is the city's idea for paying for it and included grants, included, you know, our savings, it included other, I can't remember everything that was listed there as our.
Appreciate your comments. I was just trying to get the question of, you showed us, I'm going to use round numbers. I'm probably going to get them wrong, but a $27 million proposal all the way down to a
21 million.
$21 million proposal. Trying to figure out which of those you presented to them.
I don't think that the number was given at the time. I think that it was.
So we're not sure which one of those there in favor, 72% are in favor, if we're not sure.
No, well, I know.
Okay, fair. I just want to be clear on that.
So as he continues, that'll get explained through the programming.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have charts to show.
But on the survey, I don't believe any figures were, were, were broadcast at the time.
No deeper than bull.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, one thing on it was, and I don't know, the numbers are not right in front of me right now, but citizens were asked about a six lane pool versus a three lane pool. And I think that that was kind of the, the range of the options. And there was a substantial difference in support between those two options at the time.
Right. So moving on. So session two, that happened in March of this year. The key themes that resulted from this session was the pool. The pool is by far the most sought after feature. Opportunities to improve water safety through swim lessons, lifeguard roles, et cetera. Location for competitive swimming events and then providing an exercise and recreational asset for the city. Were all the, the key themes resulting from that session. Additional input included, the pool highlighted support for a school district partnership and an opportunity to become a water safe community. More on that later. Expanded workout and multi-function spaces are extremely important as they will allow for flexible programming options that serve a range of needs and age groups. And the theme of community and flexible spaces was very strong.
Quick question.
Councilor Mayhew?
Just who, sorry, who was session two with? Was that?
That was a, I think there was about 30 some odd people. That included everybody we could get to attend. And it was a lot of different organ, different groups. We invited the tribe, we invited.
Okay, so we sent out some invites to 30 people. Okay, got it.
Right. To a number of different nonprofits and, and I think some senior groups as well. Some representatives from SIAVU were on the call too.
Have Fall City.
We, we reached out to people all over the place to try to get an attendance to that. And I think we had 30 some odd people and the second one, about 31 people in the third one. So additional comments, additionally input, so larger flexible space was articulated in different ways. So quotes, all purpose and design capable of handling many different activities was a common theme. Outdoor space expansion was also referenced. Expanded and additional amenities would keep people local more often that I think kind of highlights the commerce that might be generated around the ridge area. And then ADA access and inclusive design. Silly she catered, catered all users with examples of ramps, lifts, zero entry functionality, et cetera. Additional noted concerns, key concerns. People were worried that we would underdo it, that the facility would not be future focused and would be too small. The need to balance pool access, open swim versus swim team and lessons, that was a concern. And then they're also concerned with the affordability and access by non-members of the facility. So costs and fees accessed by non YMCA members was a clear area of concern. Session three. We focused on uses during session three. So the advisory committee envisioned how the facility would be used and for what purpose. Approximately 100, 100 ideas were generated responding to the question, well, given our review of community input, what are all the things you picture people using the community center for? The following uses were identified and documented. So use a pool. Clearly that was the, the key theme. Learn new skills, gather and connect, a place for teens to hang out, exercise, community events, enter emergency response and safety. Space to socialize, space for recreation, find family support and compete. Now, these are, these are important because we're going to talk about those a little bit later. And this, we use this as a test for how well we did with our design. So a whiteboard technique was used following that to gather, to try to rank these items. And so everybody listed their top priority item. I think they did a number of exercises. I wasn't at this, at this session, but when people listed their top, their top priority for the, this facility using the pool was by far the most sought after by the community or by the advisory group, I should say. So now we're going to move into programming.
Question, Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, just a quick question. Session three, that was with the same 30 handpicked people as session two?
I think it was mostly the same people.
Thanks.
But I think there was additional folks.
Councilor Benson?
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
And then Councilor Christiansen?
Um, one of, one of the things that I think is important about this slide is that yes, 10 people picked the pool as the most important thing out of 31. So a little less than a third of the people picked the pool as the, as the number one thing. I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to how many of those other categories though had to do with just space to have community gatherings and community connectedness. And I wonder if you looked at it in that, in that way, whether or not the pool was really the most important thing to the people who were in attendance. If I'm making any sense.
Yes, it does make sense. I think we clearly, I will show you a slide later that kind of demonstrates how the building layout meets those functions. So the place to gather in the community space is definitely very important and is probably, you know, the number two area of concern, things that people want, the community space.
Councilor Christiansen, did you have a comment regarding this bill?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to clarify that the way, or at least part of the way that the list of people who are going to be invited to the community feedback was, if you'll recall back then, the city sent out an email to council members asking if there were additional folks or age groups, things like that, that you thought should be included in the conversation. And I think that that's how the list of folks was actually invited. So it was from trying to be as inclusive as possible and get as many different types of voices.
Keep moving on. So again, programming. So here, this is the portion where we're taking this community input and we're going to convert it into building space. All right. So we met and I'm going to walk you through this process a little bit. We had met in our initial meeting, our programming meeting, we start off with guiding principles. What we're trying to do is refine this, this portion. We start with a broad level, thousand feet. Guiding principles, we'll move into objectives. And then we look at design criteria and we kind of become more granular as we progress. So with the guiding principles, I think I've shown you the slide before, but we identified a magnetic hub, uniquely Snoqualmie, inclusive design, maximize flexibility, stewardship, and then of course, a high performing facility. Lot can be said about that, but that's how we, we broke those out. So programming tasks translated the community input into a framework for architectural design. The framework focused on the following core areas. This is where we, we took what the community is asking and we envisioned spaces which will serve the community. So those key spaces were lobby lounge reception area. This is where people initially interface the building. Administration, these are essentially office spaces for the folks who operate the facility. Community spaces, so a community room, kitchen, child watch, kids adventure, multifunctional and multipurpose spaces for programmable space and activities. Locker room facilities are, are very important for pools and fitness centers. So that was a lot of effort and attention was given into how we lay out locker rooms. The pool, of course, an auditorium, which is really the whole pool complex together includes the pool systems and equipment, aquatics offices, lifeguard storage, et cetera. And then fitness, the fitness spaces, the dry side improvements. Don't read this. The point of this is where we took, we, we looked at each space and now we're developing criteria. Now we're taking each of these spaces, we say, all right, how big does it need to be? What functions does it need to have? And so we will go through it. What sort of fixtures, furniture, the FFNE needs to be provided, displays, finishes, aesthetics and essential information or essential functionality that needs to be programmed into the space. And then given the size of the memberships that we think that, that we can generate from a facility this, this in this location, we can develop sizes for each of these items. Again, don't read this, but you know, there's the building entry, the administrative offices, community services, where we identify each activity and generalize about how much space we need for each of those spaces. And what we develop is the ideal. This is our ultimate configuration. Of course, it is the, the most expensive. This is the $27 million option here is it. What this shows, if you look down here on the lower left side, we have those, those items identified by the community. Use the pool, gather and connect, teen hangout, emergency response. So each of these dots kind of represents those and you'll notice the high concentration of dots really in the community spaces and around the pool. That is what the community asked for. That is what this is providing. There was a step in here that is not really demonstrated and that is the, where we looked at different configurations of the building, but this was the clear and obvious solution to it, basically because of the topography and the existing features that are already out there. We have an existing building. We have existing parking. We have access that's already established. You know, we have an amphitheater down on the left, which we could take advantage, we need to access the pool from the back so we can get to the equipment room and, and storage, et cetera. So this was our, our layout. So given this, we knew that we're looking at the ultimate configuration, but we want to value engineer that. We want to see, can we get almost this functionality, this same level of functionality for somewhat of an for reduced costs? We're looking for value. What's the best value? So we went through a value. So we went through a value engineering study. Essentially, we didn't, we didn't do a proper and value engineering study. There's a, that, that term value engineering has a specific connotations in that, you know, there's value engineering people out there that actually focus on this. We did a kind of an abbreviated process, but what we were really doing is looking at different reduced cost options and weighing them against the ideal to find out if we could come up with something that had almost as much functional, functionality, but for a much reduced cost. So of course, I've shown you these before. You've seen these different options. We went with the two pool, but minus lazy river. You know, that saves a little money. We went for new the, the second pool, the red pool and go with just a lap pool. And you know, of course you can save a lot more money doing that, of course, but for a much reduced functionality. Single pool, but we tried to combine the red pool and the lap pool and so we can reduce costs for equipment. Four lane options and then we, of course, our nuclear option, which is basically erase all the dry side improvements. No, essentially no improvements to the existing facility and just do the pool, but the single tank option. And that was our lowest price. And that comes down to a, just about twenty million, a little over twenty million dollars. That was our, our least price. So we put that into a blender and we put it through this thing called the decision, uh, decision matrix. The idea here is that what we're trying to do is compare each of these based on function. Cost is not included in this. We did not weigh this on cost. We're just looking at functionality. And we can do the, the cost comparisons and the functionality comparisons separately, but trying to weigh them against each other and trying to assign a approximate weight to cost. Changes over time. So we looked at just functions and what we found is that there really is no silver bullet here. There's no way to drastically reduce cost without drastically reducing functionality of the, of the space. That's not necessarily a bad thing if the ideal funk or the ideal facility that makes the best business case. So, um, and that will come into play here in a little bit and I'll explain that. Now, we know that the school district, I'm sure you're all aware, the school district has, uh, decided not to partner with us on this. So there went a certain amount of funding. So we did it this time, at this time. So we had to do a quick pivot. We wanted to look at options to further reduce the cost. If we're going to get this, we had to lower that gap. We have about eighteen million dollars that we can apply towards the facility at this point. We still have not secured the remaining funding. So we looked at refined options to try to lower that gap. In all three of these, I'm going to show you three options and all three of these, we essentially eliminated all of the dry side improvements. That means the two, uh, the two fitness studios, uh, some of the, uh, the, uh, the ad, admin offices are gone. We're going to keep the same admin offices that would go with the existing facility. And it removes the access from registry. Those, all those items on the dry side, those all total about two point four million dollars. So by removing that, removing just that portion of it, we reduced the cost by two point four million dollars. So doing that with the ultimate configuration, we're down to twenty-four million dollars, still a pretty big gap. So we wanted to keep working. Here we went with the two pool option. And again, removing all the dry side improvements. Again, it didn't save us a lot of money. We, we, we got a little bit of savings, but it's still a complex system. Went further and we combined the pool. And we said a four lane integrated pool with, it's a single tank of water. Not as friendly to your users, but it actually provides quite a bit of functionality and there, there's still the lap swims. There's space for, uh, for lessons. And then we also have the, we also have the lazy river, which is very popular and, you know, useful for therapeutics and for kids. It's, uh, it translates to more memberships frankly, and it is good for the financial model. But I should note that in all three of these options, they don't include dry side improvements. So that does not meet the YMCA's financial model and it would require some additional a work on the agreement with the YMCA to operate the facility. So, but yes.
I just want to make sure I understood what you said. You just said the city would have to kick in money, right?
This to for the op, the operating agreement. I, yes, yes, sir. That's right. That and I don't know what that is.
Got it. Okay.
But we did manage to.
One second, Congressman Johnson.
Yeah. And, um, another thing that, uh, the gag gloss there, I want to make sure that the council was aware of was the idea that, um, my understanding from Parks Public Works is that this is a phasing option. It's not that they never get any dry side improvements at all. It's that for the first phase, we just do the natatorium.
Natatorium.
Natatorium. That's a new word to me. And, and then at some point in the future, we kick in, you know, a million dollars for a fitness center or something like that. Five hundred thousand dollars for an administrative. I don't remember what the exact numbers were, but something like that. So it's, it's not only pool, never any dry side improvements. It's a phased approach.
And it would be an alternative phasing approach. So what we would do is we would complete the design for the dry side improvements as well. And then we could decide, following that, whether or not we have, if we have come up with a funding, we do the whole thing. Or we do, do what we can afford now and then put the dry side improvements on the shelf and, and complete that at a later time under as a separate project in the future, with future dollars. So we did manage to narrow the gap down to about three million bucks with this option. Again, we put it back into the decision matrix and what we found out is of course, none of these are going to match or going to measure up to the ultimate design as well as the others, because it doesn't include the dry side improvement. So we scored low for all the other functions. Except for the pool and the community segments. But what we did find is for value, this option or, or option six comes as close as we can get to providing the full functionality for the lowest price. So that's essentially it. The only thing I can really say now is that we are fast approaching a decision period. The decision is, do we move forward with the design? And which does, which option do we go with? And there's a few things we can do, probably for the next couple of weeks. But we're going to need to make a decision here fairly soon, give our design team direction as to what we're going to do with this project. Any questions?
Council button.
Last time that we reviewed this as a whole, that gap between what we've set aside and what the cost is, was somewhere in the range of seven to ten million.
Yes.
So where are we at now with knowing that when we, we talked about those numbers? There may have been an assumption that the school district was part of that, which now makes the gap more. Is that where we're at? Or was that not included in that gap?
No, that was not included in it. That was the lift.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did not include that. The eighteen million dollars is fairly consistent. That includes the, the city's fifteen point four million. It includes, I think, two point three from the YMCA and it includes a million dollar grant. And then all that adds up to about nineteen, it's nineteen million dollars. Yeah, nineteen million dollars. So and the gaps that we're talking about here are, you know, still there. Uh, the options for funding, we had kind of discussed a little bit. You know, there was the, hopefully the school district would kick in, throw in some unspecified amount. There was some possibility that with the failure of the levy for the Psyview Park District's pool, that we may get access to that funding. They had four million dollars in grant money, which apparently has to go back into the grant pool, which we can apply for. That money would not be available till twenty twenty-five. Now, there is this timing option that we have to consider. The energy, the energy code is changing and the energy code. We've done a fair bit of work on trying to figure out how much that's actually going to cost us if we wait. As near as we can tell, just the energy code improvements are going to be about eight hundred thousand dollars. That's assuming the ultimate configuration. That includes, you know, upgraded, uh, equipment, HVAC equipment. It includes, uh, different types of glass, different types of cladding, uh, different types of insulation. It's, it adds a lot of costs. Delaying the project also, if we were to delay the project, so a six month delay will add, well, here I can show you how much that's going to be. It's, uh, let's go clear to the end here. I got a slide here. We don't need my glasses to read, but so a delayed start, uh, if we wait a year. So we start in summer of twenty twenty-five. Just escalation alone. Uh, and this is based off of real numbers. These, uh, six percent escalation. This is what we've seen in the last two or three years in building construction, construction escalation is about six percent. That's going to add about one point six million dollars. And then the energy code, uh, adjustments would add another eight hundred thousand. So that gets us to an increase of about two point four million dollars, a delay of six months. If we were to start in wet weather. That adds close to two million dollars in cost, mostly because we'd be starting in wet weather. So if we can get this thing started, if we can get it designed and get it to construction, get our permit applications in before March, which is when the energy code changes or anticipated to take place, then we can save that bit of money. We can save on the escalation. Otherwise, we're doing wet weather construction or we're waiting a year. And the wet weather construction, of course, is, you know, a couple hundred thousand bucks.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
I hear you, but you're saving money. You're saving money on money you don't have.
Correct.
There's a four million dollar gap here. Additionally, the YMCA has not even asked for the million dollar grant. Cause that happens next year. So that money doesn't exist. So we're at a five million dollar. Until that gap answers. I, I, I'm just saving money because you're asking us to approve a project with no funding to support, funding missing. I don't think it's right for us to do that. I agree it may have added cost, but that you're not saving money on money you don't have. So.
Well, yeah, to be clear, I'm not asking you. I'm just presenting those information to you so that you can make a good decision.
You're enticing us to make a decision based on a, based on a, a deadline you're presenting to us. Which I'm saying, I don't have to make that decision because until you close the money gap, there's no decision for me to make.
Cause for me.
So, um, I don't know if you're the right guy to ask, but so I'll ask and see who manages to answer.
See if I can answer it.
So as you probably all know, I'm in favor of an expanded YMCA with a pool. Let me try that again. An expanded community center with a pool. I don't care who runs it. YMCA is the best choice. Fine. If someone else is, that's fine too. They've been a great partner to us so far and they allow anyone in there. Uh, let me try it again. They allow, they do not prevent people from coming in because of financial hardship, which I think is critical to accessing a public, publicly funded facility. Having said that, I, um, I don't support any of these options at all. I think I don't understand are what I view as a lack of community involvement. So I'm guessing that those thirty people that went in session two and session three didn't include the people we've heard from at the last council meeting and this council meeting who voiced opposition. I'm worried that we don't have a large enough input from the community. I'm when we did initial meetings on this back in two thousand nineteen, I mean, for those of you who are here, we had huge turnout, huge turnout. And lots of turnout from the community and the advantage of those kind of things is a community gets to talk to itself, to hear each other and to try and figure out whether there's a community support. Now here's one thing I know. You're never getting a hundred percent support for anything. Okay. So, um, but getting at least fifty percent or maybe sixty percent depends kind of, you know, look, a solid majority I think should be our goal. And I just, I don't sense it. And, um, a survey that sent to that doesn't even tell them what they're, I, I, I just, I just don't get much out of that survey. Seventy-two percent approved, what? I, I like cake. Is that what was your thing? I like cake. I like a pool. Well, great.
There were some cost figures in the survey.
Okay. So, but if they're not what we're looking at here, then I, I just, why? I think we need to have the community meetings and really find out what the community wants. And here's the thing. That'll build the support that we need. If we're five million dollars short, let's go ask the voters. Let's go ask them. Do you guys want to do this five million? I'm extraordinarily struck troubled. Half of the students in the Snoqualmie Valley School District live in our city. Half of the students. Okay. How is it that, I mean, I was at the school board meeting and their answer was not right now. Now here, I, what I didn't hear, no, not ever. I heard not right now. We got a whole bunch of things we're trying to deal with. I heard one council member at the school district say, I need to understand how many students are in this sport. How many are in that sport? How many? That, there's a bunch of information that that council member thought. Council member, well, um, that may not be the right title, board member. Which also seem like good questions to me. It all speaks to me of an idea that we haven't done the work in the community to find out if there's support for this, to help people weigh in. I'm wondering, this decision matrix, which sounds pretty good. I don't remember voting on it. Maybe you guys voted on it. Maybe I was absent one day, but how is it that, that elected council isn't voting on that? But an unelected group of thirty people who, I, I, I don't understand that. So I just don't think we've gotten to where we need to get to. The county is very eager to see our, I, I don't. I, maybe that's optimism. Maybe we can get the money in twenty twenty-five. We can't apply until twenty twenty-five. That's when the next round opens. But for goodness sake, if, if, uh, if we've got a solid proposal, north, uh, sorry, Psyview. I believe had a four million dollar commitment. Let's go at, I mean, we're trying to close a gap. And we know from the YMCA's numbers that they believe that attendance will be much more than just our city. So that's an attractive proposition to the county. So it just seems to me, we haven't done the work to get the community on board to adjust what we're doing to what the community wants, to make sure the community does want this. Therefore, to have the support built that will that the school board members will hear that, um, we'll feel comfortable supporting and we'll close this funding gap. But my point of view right now is we didn't, haven't done the work to get the money. The notion that we would go break ground without the money seems not responsible to me. But I don't want to give up on this. I just don't think we've done the work. Let's go do the work. Get the community involvement, make sure we're doing what the community wants, make sure the community really is behind this and demonstrate that to the school district, to the county and get the funding that we need. That's my point of view. And, and we've got to figure out which one of these options, because there's no way I'd ever vote for that option you just brought. I understand how you got there and I think that was great work. Thank you for doing that. But I just wouldn't, I don't. I don't think that's what our folks want. So, um, I'm not even sure though that the twenty-seven million was what they want. I'm not sure it isn't. I just I'd like to see us involved in the decision of what's in the thing. So that's my point of view.
Because our bits and then council rotten.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Uh, one of them, uh, but just to speak to what, uh, Councilman Mayhew said, I, you know, I, I'm hearing something, you know, I was at that school board meeting and, uh, I was very disappointed. It sounded like they were didn't sound like they, it sounded like if they were able to get the people of Snoqualmie to pass. The people of Snoqualmie to pass. Uh, another bond measure, then they were flush with cash, then they'd okay the plan to, to, to do the pool maybe. And I. And frankly, I, you know, what I heard from the students is the same kind of thing that I'm hearing from some of our citizens is, well, you know, if I'm not a. If I'm, if I'm not a swimmer, what's in it for me, what am I? What am I missing out, so? I'm concerned about that, another thing that I'm hearing a lot of is the cost of membership at the YMCA. Um, and I'd love to get some final, I've heard wildly different numbers on what it costs for a family. To be a member, so I don't know if Mr. Sutton wants to speak to this, but I'm, I've heard. Well, I'm looking at that and I'm seeing the family two membership with two people and their dependents at a monthly rate of a hundred fifty four dollars.
Yes, but Snoqualmie residents get.
There's a nine eight oh six five discount of how much?
I think it's a hundred and eleven dollars.
So, so, so fifteen percent, fifteen percent, then we, we'd be knocking off another twenty eight bucks off of that.
I think that, yeah, I have to look at two things, I look at the website and I have to look at our operating agreements.
So that'd be, so that'd be about one twenty six, that'd be about a one twenty six a month for a family. To, to be a member there, the, the, okay, so, so there you're looking at, um. You're looking at seventeen, or, no, I'm sorry, uh. Eight hundred dollars a year for the family. Um, what if I'm not a member of the Y and I want to use the pool? And I'm not a member.
Yeah, people pay a daily rate.
Do you, do you have any idea what that would be?
The daily rate for a family, I think, is around twenty bucks.
So twenty, so, so, so if you wanted to go once a week, it, it'd cost you almost what it would for a membership. Um, and then, uh, last question on that. Once there's a pool, is it expected that those rates are, are going to be the same? Would it still be a hundred twenty six for a Snoqualmie family to be members at, at our Y once, once? The uh, expansion's all done?
Right, so currently, the Y offers what we call a local rate for Snoqualmie residents, only one people. And that's reduced further than the numbers we talked about earlier. Because there's no smoking. And our operating agreement is written in a way that shouldn't expansion happen, that local rate would go away. And so people would pay the published rate and reduce talking about it.
Okay, so that explains the lower number, I was talking to, to my friend Abby Langford and she said, oh, we're only paying like a hundred bucks or a month, there's.
Local rate, just for the Snoqualmie Y location, not to.
But that would go away.
Right, other members pay a, a Y, a Seattle Y rate and they go to Smiling.
Right.
So now what would happen for our operating agreement is that local rate would go away, our published rate would be the one we were talking about a minute ago.
The one twenty six.
High rate, one twenty six, it'd still be a discount for.
For Snoqualmie.
Exactly right.
Okay, all right. And uh, and what about just, uh, last question on that, um, day pass for an individual?
I I'm sorry, I don't.
No idea.
Let me look it up.
Okay, all right.
But, but it's in the, it's in like a fifteen to twenty five range, I think fifteen is for an individual twenty five. Somewhere in there, um, it, it, I mean, the membership model that we, you know, we operate from is, is first based upon. Building a, a community of people that are paying a consistent rate so we kind of know how to operate, you know, and how to be able to serve people. Um, and then obviously we provide a subsidy for people to come out of the public rate, we make that available uh, throughout the community, so people can come in and. And if they cannot afford the published rate, they. We talk, we talk to us and come up with a rate that is in line for it.
Well, well, I, and I appreciate that, I think that's a wonderful thing that the Y provides and uh, God bless you for doing it, I think that's, that's hugely important. Um, but, but at the same time, I think there are also a lot of folks that might, might say. You know, a hundred twenty six a month, that is not a pill that, that our family can swallow right now and we're not going to ask for help. Um, and, 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 and we probably wouldn't qualify for it anyway. Um, so I, I, so, so that person. I could see them thinking, geez, I have a, I have a vested interest in the millions of dollars that the city set aside. Um. And if it's all going into this pool that. That I'm never going to visit. Right, you know, so, so at that point, I'm, you get angry Brian Holloway is coming in here and. I'm, and I, I, and, you know.
Assuming my council member.
I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's an invalid argument, I, I think that there's, that, I'm, that, that. He has, there, you know, there's, there's, there's a point in saying, hmm, maybe we should figure out. Some way to use these funds in a way that's going to benefit everyone in the city equally without. An access fee, uh, but I, but that, but those numbers are really helpful for me, thank you, thank you very much for that.
So Councillor Rotten was next, and then Councillor Chrisison.
Yes, and I'm also conscious of the time, because at nine thirty, we need to do kind of a check in on the remainder of the agenda. Um, I appreciate everybody's comments, especially Mr. Holloway's comments. Um, I, I think that just kind of backing up, backing up um, a bit. The reason why we went ahead with the. Design build phase was so that we could have our vision on paper and we have that on paper. We needed that in order to go to our funding sources, the school district was one. But there are many others, including King County, including the state. Um. Where I'm at right now is, I don't want to, I don't want to extinguish the dream. But there's also, you know, a ten million dollar gap that I'm cognizant of. I'd be a lot more comfortable if we knew that we had two thirds of it filled with wet sources. Um, one of our options is council manic. And when you do the math, it's not that huge of a lift to bridge that gap. But I think where I'm at right now is, I just need more confidence that we have. A significant part of that ten million, or. We have the option of doing an advisory vote, which doesn't. Obligate us if we come in at fifty eight percent, it's up to the council that's sitting at that time, whether to go ahead and move forward. Or we just simply do a bond. And which requires sixty percent, we have a lot of options. But we don't have a lot of time and we also have other competing. Interests and, and when you think about, you know, a, a bond that would come up this following fall. There are some other things that are kind of on our plate and how many things can you put on the plate that are going to suffice? So, you know, just putting things in perspective, I appreciate the fact that, you know, time is going to cause things to rise. But maybe that's not the real issue is, and then I think going back to the first three versions that you showed or four versions. I kind of like the premium version, because there isn't much difference between, we might as well, you, you build a pool, it's built. And we've seen that eighty five years later with Si View, it's too small. So I'd, I'd be a little bit cautious against that, but I think that we need to put things in perspective. And I totally agree, we need more confidence of the public behind us before we take that leap into the deep end. The pool, sorry.
Councillor, Councillor Chrisison.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Rotten's comments, um, I also did, I, I do think that it's important to get, um. As, as much public input as we can, as we're looking forward to making the decision, as well as getting some additional information on. Uh, what the specific options will be for funding, I think that's very important, um, as we're looking at next steps. I did want, um, to go ahead and, and just correct the record a little bit, because I, I was also at the school board meeting and I did pull up. The aquatic survey from the high school. And back when they did it in twenty nineteen. The support report was actually ninety four percent of students did want the pool. And that was with seventy three point two six percent strongly support and twenty point nine six percent. Um. For somewhat support, and that was when they were asked about the district investment in the high school. Um, stadium field, track, baseball fields, all of that, um, and an expanded gymnasium that had already been put in place. And whether they'd support the district making an investment as a partner in a pool to other student aquatics, um, activities. So just to clarify, um, they, they did actually look at it and there was public engagement at that point, there have. Again, been a number of opportunities for people to, to give comment and I. I suspect you guys received the same emails as I did, um, and I've received a, a number of them in, in support of it. And I, I hear from a lot of members of the community all the time, again, I, I don't think that there's a majority of folks out there. Um, who are in opposition to the pool, it's, it seemed pretty strongly supported that we have. A lot of our, our voters looking for this, not just as the pool, but also for the additional programming that can be offered. Um. I think that, that it's important to, to continue trying to get as much information as we can on that and, and I do think that it's important to get. To a point where we can make that decision. Um.
Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, there's a notion that I've heard floated around a little bit here that, that troubles me, this idea that, well, I'm not going to use it, therefore we shouldn't have it. We have plenty of streets here in Snoqualmie that I never drive on, so we shouldn't refurbish those streets ever. Um, not every kid is on the football team, yet, yet they have a giant football stadium. At, uh, the, at the high school, uh, so just this idea that not everyone is going to use the pool means that we shouldn't, uh, have a community center expansion. Um, yeah, that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, there are a lot of things that. That I don't use, that I fully support, my kids, uh, won't go to every single school in, uh, the Snoqualmie School District, does that mean that those schools shouldn't exist? Um, so anyway, uh, that point aside, um, there, there is a curiosity that, that I found, which is, um, that. Uh, it does seem that there's plenty of evidence that at a minimum, a majority of the citizens of Snoqualmie want cake. At a minimum, that seems to be the case. I don't know by what percentage. I don't know if, by what percentage are willing to fund it with what models, but at any rate, I do believe that the majority of our citizens want cake. But it does feel like the silence is deafening. There hasn't been a tremendous ground swelling of, uh, of public support, um, that's been particularly vocal. Uh, and I, for this kind of expenditure, just feels like I would have expected that somehow. Um. And, but certainly to the point that other council members have made, uh, there's no way that, uh, I'm ever going to vote for something that isn't funded. Uh, not by that kind of a margin at least. Yeah, for a thousand dollars short, I bet we could find a thousand dollars, but. You know, by these kinds of wide margins, we got to have some sort of funding model in place for it. Um. So that was, uh, those were my thoughts on that.
So at the next council meeting, the round table will be regarding the community survey that just happened, and you'll see the results of it and most likely before that. But there was a question in there about the community center and it was like sixty percent were for it, so Councillor Benson, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm gonna call out the false analogy, but, uh, I live on a street, you live on a street, everybody lives on a street, we pay for streets. Um, and yes, my kid isn't on the football team either, but if you've been to that stadium on a Friday night in football season. You know that more people than that participate in enjoying the football team. Um, the, this is a massive amount of money. And everybody in this city has a rightful claim to a say in how that money is spent. And that, that's, that's the argument here, not that, um, not everybody is going to use the bike lane, so why should we have a bike lane? It's not, uh, it, everybody has a right to have a say in this and it's not, and, and you're not being a jerk. If you say, this, this doesn't feel like it's the best use of these funds, we can probably find a way to spend these funds in a way that benefits absolutely everyone. Um, I don't think that's an unreasonable ask.
Your Pro Tim Holloway.
Just, uh, history point, um. Some time ago, one of those bond issues, which was for a significant chunk of change, we're talking millions, I don't remember the exact figure, somewhere between four and sixteen. Uh, did get a majority of the community, at least those who voted, saying, yes. I want the pool and I'm willing to pay this, now, uh, those bond issues require sixty percent, so it didn't get that, but at least a majority did say yes. We'd have to go back and look, but. So. I, I don't think we, and again, I'm concerned. With the, uh, environment that we had, then you got that vote with the environment we have now with the community engagement. I don't think we'd get that, get near that vote, so I agree, we need, we need to stir community engagement on this. Uh, and get those people who really support talking if you think you're moving, want this move forward.
Councillor Mayhew.
Yeah, just, uh, one other thing to think, um, about in the discussion is, um. There's sort of a, are we going to spend this capital money and do this big capital thing? Then there's this discussion about. The operating costs, you know, what are the YMCA fees, you know, monthly fees, how much is that up to in a year? You know, how does that work? Um, so I just wanted to comment on that for a minute. The. There are, there are, okay. Don't quote me on this, but there are basically the number of pools in this country. That actually self-support on entrance fees, you can count on your fingers. It's almost zero. Statistically, it's almost zero. Almost all public pools are supported by, uh, taxpayers. If you go swim down in Issaquah. They get, I believe somewhere around a million and a half dollars from the city every year to operate that, so that fee you pay to get in. Um, that's, that's not covering their costs. Well, why, why don't they set the fee where, uh, they could pay for themselves? Because no one's going to pay. Those level of fees, no one's going to pay five hundred dollars for a membership a month, no one's going to pay fifty bucks to come in for a swim. So that's just the economics of pools. So the really, so, so the thing that I understand is when you look at. Say our neighbor to the east. When they think about running their pool, they have two issues they have to deal with. The operating costs, which the Si View voters have, they voted in, they taxed themselves to help pay for that place. The operating costs, by the way, that requires a fifty percent vote to do. Okay? Um. The capital cost is where the sixty percent comes in and that's where they're not sure, they've gone to their voters several times now and their voters are just not sure they want to pay for that. But when they ask them for the OpEx, just so you know, they get told yes, the fifty percent, they get that, so. As you think about, like, what I'm trying to say is, don't let. The YMCA's fees or the current structure. Mean you don't want to go for the capital, treat them as two separate issues, you can go to the voters and say, so you can contract with the Y to run something. And then have our voters pay a bunch of the OpEx. Um, so there are different ways to cover the operating costs, don't let the operating costs. Change your view, I mean, in, unless you're sure you've really thought it through. Um, be careful about sort of mixing those two concepts, so just, I, I just wanted to throw that out, remember, there is another way to do. Uh, operating costs, and by the way, there's an easy way to ask the people if they want to pay for that. Let them vote on it. So, just something to think about.
Councillor Rotten.
Order, there, we're past nine thirty and we do have some other items on the agenda for this evening. Um, how would you like to proceed?
So, Councillor, we do have revenue options remaining, we also have different reports as well as, we do need to get to an executive session, so. Do you want to continue conversation or discussion on the community center and then go into revenue options or?
Can we wrap up in five minutes on this, I don't, I mean, it's been great discussion and then, um. Dispense with the rest and move into executive session.
Councillor Mayhew.
Yeah, move to postpone the remaining items on the count, on the agenda except for executive session to our next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and second by Councillor Mayhew and moved by Councillor Mayhew and second by Councillor Washington. To move the remaining items on to the. Agenda for the next council meeting, except for executive session, any discussion? Councillor Chrisison.
I was just going to ask, how busy is the next calendar? This, it's not, it's not very busy, no.
And then.
Yeah, twenty-six.
I, I can add that one back in. Any other, okay, any other discussion? All's in favor of CI? Any opposed nay? Right, thank you. All right, so we have executive session. Tonight, it is pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one. To consider the election, selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase. When public knowledge regarding such consideration would, could cause a likelihood of increased price or price. Um, as well as executive session forty-two dot three zero. One one zero one I. Discuss with legal counsel matters related to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel. Potential litigation to which the agency is or is likely to become. A party when public discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. So, most likely, um, potential action will be taken following the closed session. After the closed sessions concluded, I'm counsel return to the open session, and how long do you anticipate that this will take? About fifteen minutes, so we'll take a five minute break and come back at ten. That's true, we could do that, we'll probably go upstairs to the conference room up there. And so we return by ten PM and those attending will be our city attorney, David Lynn Hand and. City administrator, Mike Chambliss.
Yes, it's possible to do it here because we're clearing the room, correct?
We have to.
We, we would have to stop the meeting and then restart it and since there's action after.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. We're now, we are reconvening, we just completed a, a closed session and no action will be taken. So there being no further business to come for counsel, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mayor Tim Holloway and seconded by Councilor Christensen, all in favor of CI? Any opposed nay? And we are adjourned, thank you.